The crowds would be, would make it a lot tougher, if not impossible, to socially distance. I just, I'm pleased to hear they're going to continue to monitor it. I'd like, obviously, as so many others would, perhaps everyone, that we can reopen everything sooner rather than later, particularly as people have really made a strong effort to get vaccinated. And I think we're hearing even on the national level from some very credible medical personnel that, you know, we should, we should be moving in that direction. So again, thank you for that clarification and I, again, I appreciate the, our Board of Health. Thanks. Thank you, Shereen.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. Any other board members, questions for Dr. Dunkinson? Okay, not seeing any remote participants. Anybody wants to speak? I see a hand up. Is there anybody on the phone who doesn't have the remote app to be able to put your hand up? You may speak out. Okay? Not hearing any. L.A. Gibbs, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to echo some of Dean's comments. I spoke last night at the Board of Health. We've spent now a year doing what we've been told. A lot of people have gotten vaccinated. We've also learned how to socially distance and make sure we wear masks in appropriate areas. I think there's some individual responsibility. I had a real problem with keeping them on at the transfer station and at Lighthouse Beach. I think those places, people socially distance anyway. But also, you know, I got vaccinated so that I could walk downtown with my family in the summer, and now I can't do that. And I think a lot of people have done that. We did what we were told. Everybody should be vaccinated by June 1. And I think there are people who will continue to wear masks if they have not been vaccinated or if they feel that they're susceptible. So I hope that we, Governor Baker is one of the last governors to, to open up. And for Chatham to be less open than the governor causes me some concern. And I also suggested we should see what other towns are doing. If everybody else is opening up and Chatham is the one with the blinking light saying you have to wear your mask, I think that's an issue. So I hope that we take this a week at a time and see how it goes. People really looking forward to the summer, particularly residents, and I think we've done our job. I think people have really followed the rules. And I think it's time to move on. If we don't do it now, I don't, I see this becoming a pattern where there will always be a reason why we have to keep our masks on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other remote participants that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, not hearing any. Yes, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification with the statement made by the previous speaker. You do not need to wear a mask on Lighthouse Beach. You need to wear the mask at the overlook and on the stairs to the beach, but you do not need to wear a mask on Lighthouse Beach.
Yes, I understood. I meant on the overlook. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to Jill, our town manager. Update?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I don't have anything new to report, but we are looking at and planning for the reopening of town offices to the public. So we're going to have our initial discussion at the department head next week, and then I'll have more to report after that, including phasing in each building and so forth. And I also wanted to note that the summer rep programs, the registration open, I believe, at 12:00 midnight last night, so today very early, and they're, they're quite, they're getting quite full. So if people are interested, please go on to the Chatham Community Center and the Recreation page to register. And those programs will all be socially distanced and still under the COVID protocols. And that's all I have to report.
Great. Thank you, Jill. Any, any questions for Jill from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, thank you, Jill. Okay, next is our public hearing, I mean, our public comment period. And so if anybody has any comments that they wish to make on our business agenda items, I do want to note that we do have a public hearing in that, in a public hearing, you're allowed to speak on that matter. But public comments on the agenda items, the Crow Road, again, the Crow Road intersection will be discussed. You can comment during our discussion. Any comments? Okay, not hearing any. So, okay, so we're going to go to our consent agenda item. And I just want to hear a motion to approve the annual seasonal closure of Bucks Creek with an effective date of May 15, 2021.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, let's take a vote then. Dean?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Cory?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay. Then our annual closure of Bucks Creek is in effect May 15. Thank you. And, all right, great. All right, next we have our public hearing to consider an application for change of manager to the annual all alcohol license for the Chatham Squire. I'm going to ask our clerk on Board Member Matters to read the hearing notice, please. Cory?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Town of Chatham, public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 4, 2021, at 5:30 PM remotely through the Microsoft Teams platform to consider an application for change of manager to the annual all alcoholic beverage license for One Drop Operating LLC, EBA, Chatham Squire, 487 Main Street. All interested parties are encouraged to participate through the link in the posted Select Board meeting agenda. Sign the members of the Board of the Select Board.
Thank you, Cory. Okay, Shawna, I think, is there any information, additional information we need to know about the application? It looks like the change of manager is to a Drury McMullen, and just don't know if the applicants are on the call tonight or on the meeting. Any representatives?
I'm Drew McMullen.
Hi, Drew.
And I am on the call.
Thanks, Drew. I'm well, thank you. Okay, Shawna, is there any additional information we need on this or any questions that we need?
No, Madam Chair, this is a fairly straightforward application reflecting a change of employment at the Squire.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board on this application? Don't have any? Any questions from the remote participants or comments? Okay, I'll accept a motion to accept if there's no other comments.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we've been unaccepted. Okay, we'll take a vote. Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
The chair says aye. Okay, thank you very much, Drew, for attending. We didn't have any questions and we wish you well in your new position as manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Okay. Now is our business agenda items, and the first is one that is a recognition of our retired herring warden, Don St. Pierre. Many of you know Don. I think that we have Dr. Dunkinson and I think our resource, Coastal Resource Director, Ted, is Ted, Ted Keon on the call as well?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Welcome, everybody. So, do you want to kick us off on this?
Sure. So we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize Don St. Pierre, who has admirably served the town of Chatham for 57 years as our herring warden. You know, long before my time, long before Ted's time. And in fact, when we look back through the records, we couldn't really find anything even when Donnie was appointed. You know, it's been that long. But Donnie has single-handedly managed the herring, the herring run that runs from Riders Cove all the way up into Stillwater Pond and then ultimately ends in Lover's Lake. And he has just done that year in and year out, good years, bad years. He's managed to find ways to make improvements to the herring run over time with, you know, practically no resources, but he's always managed to make it happen, and we can't thank him enough. And I know the herring can't thank him enough as well. So with that in mind, we have a couple of items that, with the board's permission, we want to go ahead and give to Donnie. The first item that we have is a letter of thanks from the, from the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries, who are in charge of the herring runs up a little higher, there you go, who basically manage the herring program at the state level and have worked with Donnie for many years. But I doubt, I suspect that Donnie probably even predates the herring program at the state level. So that was the first item that we had. The next item that we have is a citation from the State House, from the House of Representatives, courtesy of Sarah Peak. And it says, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, we hereby know to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Don St. Pierre in recognition of, I think it says four years, but we know it's more than that, of service as herring warden for the town of Chatham. Signed the fifth day of April 2021 by the Speaker of the House.
So thank you.
We have that personal letter from Sarah herself transmitting that.
Thank you.
And then we have a similar citation from the State Senate, courtesy of our Senator Julian Seer. And again, it says, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Don St. Pierre in recognition of your dedicated service to the town of Chatham as herring warden for over 50 years. And that was signed March 1 by the, by the President of the Senate. And then finally, on behalf of the town of Chatham, we have a plaque presented to Donald, Donnie St. Pierre upon his retirement and in recognition of his selfless commitment and remarkable service as Chatham's herring warden for over five decades, Chatham Board of Selectmen 2021. And so that, we offer our absolute congratulations to Donnie. And Shereen, I'll turn it back over to you guys for any comments from the board.
Absolutely. Donnie, you have taken care of one of the most important fish that we have in the ocean. It is, you know, that fish is what feeds the entire world, if you think about it. You know, we, we have the allies and the, and the bluebacks and, and they mix in with the mackerel and they run up and down the coast and they end up coming home to spawn in our local waters. And you've made sure that they have been taken care of. And they're fish that other fish eat. And, you know, we've, we've done a lot to champion, to protect them from mid-water trawlers and predation, and you're part of that. I did want to read a little bit of the letter that, that was sent to us from Dan McKernan, the Director of, of the Division of Marine Fisheries, who I've known for a long time myself, and that he wanted to say that the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries would like to extend our sincere gratitude, respect, and congratulations to you, Don, for your remarkable dedication as the position of herring warding, warden to the town of Chatham. And I, I believe that we have that same sentiment with our own board. So for, you've got, you've, you've learned, you've shared a lot of this and with other people, and we greatly appreciate your time that you've spent. Fifty, 50-plus years is a long time to, to think about that seasonality of that fish coming here at a certain time. You see the ospreys show up, you see every, the, the whole Cape biomass comes alive when, when herons start to come into the waters of, around Cape, the Sound and Cape Cod Bay. So thank you so much. And I'm sure we have others on the board that appreciate as well. I do have Chief Dave's, D. Pasquale's hand up, and then I will, I have Peter and then Jeff and then Cory. So Chief Dave?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just want to share an anecdote about Donnie St. Pierre and the herring. I can remember being a captain and we would have a full moon, low tide, and he was so worried because the seagulls were picking off the herring. And he asked us to come down with an engine and use our hose lines to blow open a wider path with some water in there to save the herring. And he would be down there with his boots on directing us. And, you know, he's always done a good job. And by the way, he was a dispatcher for the fire department for many, many years. So congrats, Donnie.
Thank you very much.
Peter? Thanks, Chief. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Donnie. Congratulations. As a self-appointed representative for someone from a non-fishing family and from somewhere else, I just want to offer my congratulations. And, and also, I think it's, it's important that you know that there are many of us who are, who really appreciate what you've done. And you think about, I think about the legacy that you left, you leave especially to the environment and our natural resources, and I want to thank you for that. Just, just last week, I was with a number of people on Zoom, and they talked about the herring run and what's happening and what's going on, and none are, are from the fishing quote community. And so thank you from all of them.
Great. Thank you, Peter. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and Donnie, congratulations. You know, well-deserved retirement. You've, you've left a great legacy, as Selectman Kokolas just noted, and I thank you. I, I have to read this, this sentence from the letter here. So in 2011, the DMF crew constructed new concrete fishways at both Lover's Lake and Stillwater Pond. Your local insight of the issues and needs for the run were instrumental in helping design and complete the project. The project remains an excellent example of our crew collaborates with towns to provide cost-effective fishway construction. This is what I love. A federal program sought to construct both ladders for a cost of $130,000, $130,000. Under Donnie's watch, he built both fishways for less than $1,000. Don, I want you to bring the same acumen to the town's budget, okay? And congratulations. Good job, Donnie. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks, Jeff. Cory?
Oh, thank you. Donnie, no, thank you very much for your service. You know, 57 years, you do it for 57 years because you love it, you enjoy it, and it showed. It's, it's, it's a great part of our heritage to have you serve that in our, for our community. And all I can say is sincere thank you, and please enjoy the, the time off.
And I must say, it's because I have an understanding wife.
Okay, thanks, Cory. Dean?
Thank you, Shereen. Donnie, you know, I, I've learned in, in time I've been in this town that service to the community is really the standard and hallmark of Chatham, and you have been an exemplar of that standard exponentially. So I think we're all very grateful to you, and I very much appreciate 57 years of contribution that you've made, and we all wish you well going forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Any, any words of wisdom, Donnie, before we, before we conclude?
Well, when I graduated from Howard High, yes, I'm a washershore from Howard. In 1960, it was the best thing that ever happened because I really, really enjoyed bringing up a family and living in Chatham. And I'm really proud of this town, and I figured if I'm going to be living in this town, I'm going to participate. And we do have a lot of great volunteers, and I'm so proud to be one of them.
Thank you, Donnie. We're very proud of your service to the town, and we know it goes beyond the herring runs and it goes to the 365, the, the Chatham 36500. You do a lot of work with the museum, and you're a very valuable community volunteer. And we thank you so much. And I hope you have a, a good, a good restful spring next year. I have a feeling you'll be around.
Madam Chair, if I may, Ted, if you think Donnie's retiring, you're fooling yourself. He will be down there just as active as he has been for years, I have no doubt.
That's right.
Great, thank you, and thank you, Donnie. Thank you very much.
Right, well.
All right. Thanks. Okay, we have now, segueing into, now that we don't have a herring warden, that we have an agenda item, appointment of a new heron warden, David Peterson. And I think Dr. Dunkinson is going to, again, give us an overview.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, a, a, as you can imagine, Donnie was not going to let just anybody take his place as herring. I've got somebody that, you know, would make a new great herring warden. David Peterson has, you know, helped Donnie over the years with the herring run. We've talked to him, Ted talked with him, you know, and we're recommending to you, based on Donnie's recommendation to us, that David be appointed as the new herring warden. As I indicated in my cover memo to you, we were not able to find any documented in my cover memo to you, we were not able to find any documentation of an appointment process. You know, there appears to be nothing in state law and the town's general bylaws. The only thing we could find is that the Board of Selectmen is responsible for the regulations in approving those, but we couldn't find any authority for anybody in terms of making the appointment. So we decided to bring it to you and defer to you guys to actually make the new appointment. So it's our recommendation with Donnie's recommendation as well that David Peterson be appointed as the new herring warden.
Okay, I have Cory's hand up. I didn't know if he was ready to make a motion or had any comments. Cory?
Then a motion. I mean, growing up, Dave was a couple of years older than I was, and I've known Dave pretty much all my life. You know, Donnie's recommendation is like gold. You know, I think making this appointment to David as the new herring warden, it's just going to add to the fabric of the community. I mean, it just makes so much sense, someone who can take over and really just, you know, represent the position fully. So I am more than happy to make the motion to recommend that David Peterson be appointed as our new herring warden.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Peter, did your second it? Is, okay, so if there's no further discussion on this, I'll, I'll go to a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Okay. And the chair says aye. Okay, we have appointed David Peterson, our new heron warden, and I'm sure, and I encourage people to reach out and it's a, and volunteer and, and learn about something that is so simplistic and important to the ecosystem of Cape Cod. So thank you very much. Okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Peterson is on the call in case he wanted to make any comment.
Okay, we're happy to hear from him. I wasn't sure he was available for tonight. David, are you, would you like to say something?
Yeah, do you hear me?
I do.
Okay, can you see me?
No.
Okay, we'll, we'll work on it.
Okay. We'll see you around the shore. Go ahead.
I'd say congratulations to, he really, really, really set the bar pretty high, and I don't think I'm ever going to come close to that because I'll be 107 years old. But I, I, I do, I do, it's an honor to take the full responsibility to that, of the herring run, and I enjoy it, and I like to encourage younger, younger kids as well to get involved. I have four grandsons, so that's going to help me out a little bit down the road. But he's, Don was a great teacher. I've known Don since, oh, gosh, I don't know, Cory, how long? Help me out here. How long have you known Don?
Forever, forever.
Yeah, pretty much forever. I mean, Don was always there helping us out when we were in Scouts, and I grew up with Don's children, and it's just, it's a close-knit community. And then I really do appreciate him, you know, moving forward, that I would be available for him to take over his position.
He's going to do a good job because the other night we were working on a project and, the other day, and he said he was dreaming about it. So he's going to be a good herring warden.
There we go.
Yeah.
That's wonderful. All right. All right, okay, well, thank you, David, and welcome to, to your new appointment.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, good night.
Good night, everyone. All right, our, our next agenda item is Fishing Line Receptacle, and this is a Girl Scout Gold Award project. We have a little fishing, fish theme going today. And it's Jade St., and I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, and I'm sure you're on the call. Hang, thank you. St. Hang.
It's okay.
This is a, this is a highest achievement earned by Girl Scouts, the Gold Award, and St. Hang is, is working towards this, and congratulations on that. I guess this is earned by senior and ambassador Girl Scouts, and it's only achieved by about 5.4% of, of the, of the folks that did, that try for this, get this award. So you're working on the installation of receptacles for fishing line collection at popular fishing locations across Cape Cod. And I, apparently, we have some of those receptacles at Harding's Beach, Bridge Street, Barn Hill Landing, and Riders Cove that Wild Care has put together. So welcome, let's hear your presentation. And you're able to share?
Thank you so much for having me tonight.
You're welcome.
All right, perfect.
And you can share your screen.
Right. All right, can you see it?
Yes, we can.
All right, perfect. My name is Jade Sanage. I'm 17 years old, and I've been in Girl Scouts for about 10 years. I will be doing my Gold Award project, which she already explained a little bit. So a little overview on my project is that the litter on the coastlines of Cape Cod is discarded into the oceans and waterways all the time. Littering is not only an environmental issue, but an enduring economic and aesthetic issue as well. By implementing these fishing line receptacles, I hope that this will help these issues. Some issues with the fishing line itself is that it can be ingested by wildlife and will not be properly digested, resulting in a slow, painful death for all that wildlife. Fishing line takes about 600 years to decompose in the ocean, and even then, it really doesn't decompose fully. It turns into microplastics, which is then ingested by other animals, and it stays in the ocean forever. It has a short shelf life, monofilament, only lasts two to three years on the shelf, and fluorocarbon lasts seven to eight years before it doesn't work to its fullest extent. It can cause ghost fishing. This kills over 6,500 animals a year. The ghost fishing is when fishing line gets caught up in, like, rocks or whatever in the ocean and then ends up tingling animals and killing them. Problems I'd like to solve is the abundance of fishing line left on beaches, waterways, and docks. I think these issues are because people don't have a place to properly dispose of their used fishing line and/or are not being properly educated on how this can affect the environment. My project objective is by implementing fishing line receptacles at popular fishing locations and educating the public on negative effects, the amount of fishing line on beaches and waterways will be reduced. My target audience is fishermen, boaters, environmentalists, and the general public. My plan is to find popular fishing locations with large masses of litter, then contact organizations and companies to empty the fishing line from their receptacles. As of right now, I will be emptying them with my friends and family. Due to COVID, I wasn't able to contact these organizations and companies to find who can help. I'll then build a website for information on each receptacle, install the fishing line receptacles at these locations, and add an informational plaque with a QR code. For finding locations, I will be working with Cape Wildlife Center and IFA. I will be, I hope to have Girl Scouts and the Salties help me empty them in the future. After presenting this information, my ideas on how to execute a solution, I'd like to request a more mission to implement fishing line receptacles throughout Chatham. I'd like to request a more mission to implement fishing line receptacles throughout Chatham. I can what it looks like in just one second. Can you see me? One second. All right. This is what it looks like. This is where the fishing line will go in, and then it has little drain holes on the bottom. Not sure if you can see them, which water can go out in case there's a storm or any water is left in the fishing line. That is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Jade. That was very thorough. I just have a couple of comments, and then some of the board members will ask you some questions, and then we'll vote either approval or nonapproval, depending on what the motion is. I think this is great collaboration with the environmentalists. I congratulate you on thinking about a project like this. We are, you know, we have so much coastline here and lots of fish we just talked about just earlier, and it's very popular for people to go bass fishing and trout fishing and, you know, catching pickroll in the ponds and all this. And you have to think of the creatures that are impacted by any of the, of the plastic stuff that is left around. I come from a fishing family, and when we, we have fish wears in Nantucket Sound, and when we pull our nets up, we oftentimes, within those nets have, we see hooks and monofilament line and have seen seals that, or sea turtles that have had lines wrapped around them. And we've worked with IFA like you are to, to rescue creatures and things like that. So what you're doing is really good work. It's good for the public to understand and to educate them on impact like this. So I congratulate you on your project, and I just want to know if any of my board members have any questions or would like a motion to approve. Peter?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make maybe a couple of observations. The first one is, you notice how a 17-year-old can put her stuff up without any problems at all? That's, that's one. And secondly, I want to commend her. I mean, this is a, we've heard a little bit about this before and have lauded, but this is a comprehensive, really comprehensive systematic plan that she's, she's putting through, and it's a lot, it's going to be a lot of work, and I congratulate her for it.
Thank you.
I would make a motion to move the select board to approve the fish, to approve as the, the presentation is provided.
Second. Second, and we have a second. The only comment, okay, we have a couple of comments, one from Dean for questions. Dean?
Thank you. Practice, there is stated, and I applaud you for it. I really just had two questions. Jade, are you also planning to approach, or maybe you already have done so, some of the other towns? Or are you focusing on Chatham at this time?
As of right now, I've been approved by Yarmouth and Dennis to put in fishing line receptacles. I also want to put some on Mass Parent Time, like they'll be helping me hopefully. And I hope to find more towns, but as of right now, just these three I'm working on.
That's great. You're going to need a lot of fellow scouts to help you out, I think.
Yes, definitely.
What's the process for, for the final awarding after you've undertaken this program by, by the leadership of the Girl Scouts?
So I need a little over 100 hours with my project, and it really doesn't matter what your project is. So before, I had to come up with a plan, go through all my paperwork, and then I had to get approved by the Girl Scouts, and they approved me. And so now I have to come to you and go through with my project.
Well, I think this is terrific. I'm obviously going to support the motion. And since time I've been on the board, we've had Eagle Scouts come forward. So this is the first time I think we've had a Girl Scout, so it's nice to have some variety here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Cory, Board Member Matters?
Sure, well, first of all, thank you very much for your presentation. I'll echo Peter's comments. Certain younger folks are a lot more tech savvy than us older folks. So I'm definitely going to support the motion. My only question is, how are we going to determine final location, locations?
I will be coming to you with the location spots after I've determined them. I want to, I live in the western area of Massachusetts during the school year, and then I live with my grandparents on the Cape in Dennis. So I want to go down to the Cape and pick out locations, and then I'd come back to you guys and see if you approve of them.
Thank you very much.
If you guys have any ideas for locations either, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check them out. We'll, we'll look around town, send you some thoughts. We have final thoughts from Jeff before we, we take a vote.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Jade, what a poised and clear presentation. I thank you, and I wish you well, and look forward to seeing what locations you're going to have your, your monofilament catches on. Are you going to recycle the monofilament after it's deposited?
Yes, I plan to contact a bracelet organization. They take, I think it's 70% of their produce and put it back into research for the environment, and they take all their recycled plastic from the beaches. So I hope that they'll take the plastic from my receptacles and make it into their own bracelet line.
Yeah, good, great. Well, thank you very much. Really appreciate your presentations. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're going to take a vote now, and, and so hold on just one more second. Okay, we have an, a motion and a second to approve this project and for Jade to move forward with it. Let's take a vote. Board Member Kokolos?
Aye.
Board Member Matters?
Aye.
Board Member Nick Castro?
Aye.
Board Member Dykens?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. So you've been approved five to zero. So we look forward to you coming back to us with the locations, and congratulations. Are you muted, Jade?
Thank you so much. Have a nice night.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, bye. All right, so the next item, item D, I am going to recuse myself from this, this agenda item, and I'm turning the, turning it over to Vice Chair Kokolos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, this agenda item is a renewal of official permits for Nantucket Sound, and I think I see Kurt Martin on the, on, on the list, unless Ted is going to give a presentation. I'm not. Go ahead, Ted.
All right. This is, as you've seen over the last few years, fairly routine. Kurt took over the fish wears that Mark Simmons used to operate a number of years ago and has been, you know, renewing these every five years as everyone else has. So very straightforward, same proposal as has been for a long time, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have any comments from the board? I see Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Yeah, I moved to approve the applications as submitted. We've approved these before in the same locations. Thank you.
Second.
Second by Cory. Okay, any other comments? Let's go for a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Vice Chair says aye. Congratulations, Kurt. Thank you, Ted. And back to Sharit.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kokolos. All right, our next agenda item is a one-day entertainment permit sales on property at Oyster Pond on October 2nd, 2021, which is On the Water, Inc. And I believe we have the organizer, Jo Ellen Erickson, is present, and?
I am, yes.
Hi, how are you? Welcome.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Happy to be here.
Okay, Shauna, is there anything that we need to, other than we have a presentation? I just want to hear from you, Jo Ellen, on your project. We have an application here for an entertainment license, and the proposal is for October 2nd from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. with setup at 1:00. You're asking for an entertainment music for mic music. But this is basically a costume fundraiser with paddleboard event, and the, and the proceeds are going to benefit the Family Pantry. Also, you're asking that you would like to have food trucks, if permissible, on the premises as well. Shauna, is there anything else we need to know about this? I do have one question, but I wanted to hear about the project.
The only other permission that would be required would be under the bylaw that requires board permission for sales on town property.
Okay. All right. So there would be two, there would be two permits that would have to be issued, the, the entertainment permit and then the sales on town property.
Correct.
All right. Jo Ellen, why don't you tell us a little bit about the event, and then we'll dive deeper into the?
Happy to, happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone on the board. I appreciate your time tonight. Hi, Jill, thank you for your time as well. So we are a newly organized nonprofit. We were hoping to have our event last year. We didn't get as far as meeting with the board last year due to COVID, but I had gone through the process of stopping in at the Harbor Master, the Police Department, the Fire Department, and, and getting very close to meeting with Parks and Rec, and then the world changed as we know it. So we are essentially a group of folks who organize costume paddleboard events, and what we try to do is make ways for other nonprofits on Cape Cod. We officially organize as a 501(c)(3). We got our status last year. And what we do is we choose a new recipient every year to be, to receive, to benefit from our fundraising efforts. And this year is the Family Pantry of Cape Cod. We all know that they do a great service. They don't have any boundaries, geographical boundaries, especially this past year during COVID. And I do believe they've helped over 10,000 clients this past year, which is pretty remarkable. So what we're hoping to do at Oyster Pond on October 2nd is have a group of participants who will be, most of us dressed like witches, hence Witches on the Water. It is a registration event. We do have a limited number of participants that will be able to paddle. That number is 75. We did already get approval from Parks and Rec. I have spoken with the Harbor Master. I've spoken with Chief Dave DePasquale. I've spoken with the Fire, the Police Department to get guidance on their safety regulations for the event. We expect to be on the water for about 45 minutes. There'll be a little ceremony in the beginning, and then we'll be out just more of like a paddle parade, a fun spectacle around the harbor, around the pond, and then back to shore for our costume awards and some other final closing statements, and then obviously celebrating the Family Pantry of Cape Cod as well. In my application, the, the merchandise that would be sold on town property would be the nonprofit's merchandise. That would be all Witches on the Waters merchandise, i.e. t-shirts, bumper stickers, perhaps board pads, and maybe a couple of other items, and that's it. As far as the license permit that we're asking for, or for the entertainment permit that we're asking for, or license, we have a local radio personality who is willing to volunteer their time to be our MC, and that would be Stephanie Viva, hoping that all goes well. And she would just MC the event and basically help us co-host it. And then as far as food trucks, I have not approached anyone because we want to do respectful of the process and see what the town, how they felt about, how you felt about that. So I don't have anybody lined up or haven't spoken to anyone in particular, but we wanted to just go through the process and get guidance from you on how that works, and if it's possible, and then what's the next step? Do they go to the Board of Health? So I'm going to defer to you on guidance for that. But that's really high level. I mean, our goal is not to compete with other nonprofits. It's just to make waves for them and to, to raise awareness of the different nonprofits we, we choose each year, help fund, fundraise for them, and really just help our fellow community members any way we can, and have a little fun doing it, so.
Thanks. Jo Ellen, do you, do you do this in other towns, or is this like a new enterprise? Or when was the nonprofit organized?
So that's a great question. So we actually, it came from a group Fun Paddle of Friends in 2019. And what happened that day, we were out on Town Cove in Orleans, and we received so much press from this. We were in the paper. We were all over social media, and people just reached out, like, what are you doing? How do we become a part of this? And, and what's this all about? And another gal and I, Susan Price, who's on the call here today, were walking one day, and we said, we have to do something with this. This has just brought too much attention, too much interest. Let's organize into a formal group and help other nonprofit organizations. And truly, that's, that's how it came, Madam Chair. And last year, we were hoping to do it, our first event last year in Oyster Pond, and then all things COVID happened. But what we were able to do, what money we were able to raise, we did donate to a, a wonderfully new organized nonprofit in Wellfleet that was a restaurateur who was creating and serving meals to various community members, and they did an incredible, incredible job last year helping their community. It wasn't a huge amount, but every amount, you know, every bit helps. So we just tried to pivot and do what we could during a crazy year. So we're back at it, and we're really, really excited. We've got a lot of interest, and we're just excited to get the ball rolling again to help our fellow community members, so.
Great. Well, we have a couple of questions from board members here.
Yes, happy to answer.
Let's take that. First will be our, our select board member, Nick Castro. Dean?
Yeah, I was, first of all, it sounds like a great event for a very worthy cause. I was just going to offer a motion. There are three motions being proposed. I'm happy to offer the first one, so maybe I'll do that. I moved to grant a one-day entertainment permit to Jo Ellen Erickson on behalf of Witches on Water, Inc. for Saturday, October 2nd, 2021, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. for outdoor amplified music and announcements at Oyster Pond Beach and Parking Lot.
Do we have a second on that?
Madam Chair, I'll second it, and I have a comment.
Okay, we have a second from Peter. So let's have a comment. Peter?
Yeah, thank you. I, I want to thank Jo Ellen for starting early for this. How are you? You know, this is October, it's in October, and it's, it's good to get ahead of something like this. I do have just a couple of comments because of other things that we have done and to take into consideration. If you're looking for a, you're going to have a sound system that's outside. There are some noise regulations. I can't remember them off the top of my head, but as far as how far it can carry and the music that you're going to have, because you're going to be right out there in, in Oyster Pond, and that's something to consider. And, and generally, if you're having 75 people, the parking lot there, if they're coming from someplace else, I'm sure you're already talking to the police or whatever about that, but that'd be a concern about what you're going to have and how it's going to be laid out. And food trucks, we can get to that when we get to the motion, but generally, we've had them at other places, but three food trucks? It might be tough having three food trucks over there. I, I have to think about that. But anyway, those are my, those are my comments. Thank you. Great idea.
Cory? Cory, you have a question?
I just had a couple of questions on the presentation. Hi, Jo Ellen, how are you doing tonight?
Hi, Cory.
Yes, with 75 participants plus, you know, plus in other individuals, as Peter mentioned, we probably need to come up with a good parking plan because Oyster Pond can only hold so many vehicles. So maybe the town parking lot up the street, some type of coordinated plan would make sense from a, a safety and functional perspective. So I would, I would look into the details on that. Also, with the parking lot capacity, the number of food trucks, I think we should kind of look a little bit further into it. It doesn't make sense for one, two, three. I know you haven't reached out to any particular ones, but are your thoughts, since this is a fundraiser, are your thoughts that the food truck could work independently of the fundraising event? Or are they looking to contribute to the fundraising efforts? What is the model you're looking to use?
That's great, Cory. Thank you. And I could speak to the parking as well, if you guys would like me to. To be truthful, we've not spoken to anyone. Our vision is that they would come independently, and if they would be willing to donate maybe a portion of their proceeds to the beneficiary that day. And I think that's all up for discussion. And again, the number of trucks, we defer to you. Whatever you think is, is best for the event is fine with us. We're just, we'd be thrilled to be able to have the opportunity. But that's how, what I envisioned, that they would come, they would be there at the event, and hopefully be willing to donate a portion of their proceeds from that day to the event. As far as the parking is concerned, that is something, or you're welcome. That is something we have thought very hard about, and we know that it is tricky over there. So our vision is with hopes to use the public parking lot, and we have to trailer shuttling all the boards over so that we don't have parking and traffic issues coming down the road. That would be quite a nightmare. And our goal also is to obtain those stickers that most people never put on their boards that has their name and their phone number. So that would be their identification sticker when we put the board on the trailer and bring it over. And then that way, they can walk over from the lots, and we'll have detail, police detail, helping to make sure there's safe passage across the road.
That's great. I, just a quick question. I want to make sure, is this is open to the public as far as you don't have to be a paddleboarder to participate in the event or watch the event? You're going to welcome people to?
Great question. So anyone is welcome to watch. However, for safety sake, we do have to have a registration process and cap it so that we have safe, a safe number out on the water for the Harbor Master to monitor as well as our other safety paddlers. So anyone is welcome to join us. In fact, if people want to walk over and watch the spectacle, that would be wonderful. But on the water will be registered participants who have, all safety protocol have to be met and waivers, et cetera. And they do register and they're also fundraising. Once they register, there'll be a fundraising component for the Family Pantry of Cape Cod.
Great. Jeff, question?
Yeah, no, it sounds like a really well thought out plan thus far, Jo Ellen, and I wish you well. It sounds like a fun event and I think you'll have a blast. I do have one question on the sales of the, on town property. Are the proceeds from those sales, the witches on the water sales go directly to the food pantry as well?
So as of now, we're expecting that the merchandise sales will go to witches on the water to help us continue to fund our process of hosting events and, and whatever we need as an organization to keep going. So we're expecting our proceed, the proceeds from our merchandise to go to witches on the water.
Okay. And then as far as food trucks go, I echo my fellow members here. I think I'm fairly in favor of having food trucks there. I think two or three is going to be, you know, we've got to be careful. It's going to get tight. If you want the food truck to be down near the pond, it's going to get tight.
Yeah, and we'll be happy with one. We defer to you. This is a new passage for all of us and we're happy to, to work with you guys and we appreciate your advice and your comments, very much so.
And then one, one follow-up, if you will. If it's a success, would you return or are you looking for different venues across the Cape or what? Okay.
It's a great question. I would love to. We walked, we were all over the Cape in 2019 trying to find a place and honest to goodness, Oyster Pond is the best. So if you have us back, we, you know, we hope that it's a true success that you welcome us back.
Okay, thank you.
So we do have precedent with a couple of events in town that we support like this. Number one is the Oktoberfest that's over on Cape Cod Park, has entertainment, food trucks. They sell, they vend things, but the, the women of fishing families have entertainment. They do food and they also sell their own goods. So we've sort of allowed this on town property in other ways going forward, just for general information. I don't know if Shawna could add anything to that, but I think it's just for general information. Right now, if you want to, if there's no more comments or questions, we'll take a vote on the entertainment motion that I believe Dean made and was seconded either by Peter or Cory. Can't remember this time. I think it was Peter. Unless, so if there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote on the entertainment motion. So let's see. Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Thank you.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Okay, and the chair says aye. All right, so I would need a, I need to grant, a motion to grant witches on the water permission for sales on town property for their nonprofits merchandise.
So moved, Peter?
So moved, has a second?
Second.
If there's no further discussion, we can take a vote. Okay, I don't see any further discussion. No hands up. So Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
The chair says aye. All right, so lastly, we have, we have the organization seeking permission for one, two or three food trucks that will be contracted by witches on the water to vend at Oyster Pond for the event. So I just need a motion and then we can have further discussion. Is there a motion on this, on this item or do you want further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm happy to offer the motion. My sense from listening to everyone is that maybe we're talking about one food truck here or one food truck's subject to, subject to consultation by the applicant with the, the Health Department and the Police Department. Maybe that makes sense. So I'm happy to offer that motion. Pardon me, the Park Department, you know, the.
Okay, so.
What, can I guess ask a, one question before I make, put the motion forward?
Sure.
Yeah, Jo Ellen, have, have you already or will you be communicating with the Harbor Master? As you mentioned, the Harbor Master earlier.
Great question, Dean. Thank you so much. I have circled back with every department, yes. And what we're going to do is once the registration opens and we have a good sense of what our numbers are going to be for participants, we will circle back again with all the departments just to make sure we're still in line. Is one detail enough from the Police Department? Is one vote on the water enough with the Harbor Master? So yes, we're in communication with all of the different departments.
He didn't express any particular concerns?
No, no. He just had very strict guidelines of safety requirements, which would be a life vest, ripcord, and we'll have a safety check when they go in the water. So we will just follow his requirements to the letter.
Thanks for that clarification.
No, no problem.
Madam Chair, I move to grant permission for one food truck contracted by witches on water, Inc. to vend at Oyster Pond on Saturday, October 2nd, 2021, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. with permission to arrive at the parking lot at 1:00 p.m. for setup. Food trucks, food truck singular must depart the parking lot no later than 5:00 p.m.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have further discussion on this? Okay, if not, we'll take a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right, so good luck with your event.
Thank you, everyone.
To hearing more details as you go on.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Yes, you too. Okay, so moving on to our next item, I just have to make sure I'm in the right place. Our next item is an update from Christie Senatori, the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission. Christie, welcome. You're going to give us a little verbal report, not a little, or just give us a verbal report.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all. Thanks for the opportunity to be here. I'm Christie Senatori, the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission. And as you all know, I like to visit the Boards of Selectmen and the Barstool Town Council from time to time and just provide some updates on some of the work that we're doing and have an opportunity to have a dialogue and answer some questions. I know you've still got some more items on your agenda, so I will be brief. But before I provide some updates, I did just want to take a moment to recognize Tom Wilson, who is the Commission Member from Chatham, who's been an exemplary Commission Member and was really put to task this year in serving on our Climate Action Subcommittee. And I'd like to recognize him and give him a few moments at the end of the session through the chair. So just highlighting some of the work that we did in, in 2020 and kind of highlighting some of our priority work as we're moving into and partway through 2021. A lot of our work this year focused, as you all are, are focused as well on water quality and wastewater. And so we spent a significant amount of time providing administrative and technical support to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. And I wanted to thank Dr. Dunkinson for serving as the member on the Management Board. It's been a long couple of years putting this together and really making sure that we have appropriate regulations to guide distribution of the funds. And as you all are aware, I'm pleased to report that at the meeting on April 14th, the Management Board distributed and voted to distribute $71 million worth of grants to our local communities. And I was very pleased to see much of this actually going to the town of Chatham. So this is a really wonderful opportunity to see infrastructure dollars really going back into the community. So we're pleased that that is an outgrowth of the 208 Plan and we're continuing to see some funding for wastewater, water quality projects in the region. So that was one thing that was certainly a focus of ours. We also spent a significant amount of time responding to the COVID-19 pandemic, as did many of our communities. And one way that we were able to contribute was really in providing data and information. So if you haven't had a chance, we have our datacapecod.com website. I think we've had this conversation a couple of times, but we do continue to update that dashboard and provide the best available information for our communities. This going forward will serve as the platform for a new updated Stats Cape Cod. So what we have now for our demographic profiles for the communities will now be transferred and upgraded into a new platform. So we'll continue to make sure that this is available to our communities. We're also, in the next several months, looking at the development of several different surveys. And the first is looking at a homeowner survey, so those that purchased homes and property in 2020 and into 2021, just trying to recognize and understand their intentions for that property so that we can really understand the population shifts that we're seeing and hearing about in the region and trying to capture that data more accurately. The second will be a survey of our second homeowners, so getting a better sense too of how they intend to use their property, what they're current, currently doing with that property and then into the future too, if that has shifted, how they're, how they're using their property. So this will all help us as we look to gather the most accurate information for planning purposes and to make sure that we're able to advocate to bring in additional resources too into the community. And then finally, the Climate Action Plan that we've been working on for many months now is out for public comment. And so if you haven't had a chance to take a look at that, we did issue a press release. This is available on our website. And it's about 210 or so pages, so certainly there's a lot there to digest. But it's an important step for the community and for the Cape to really have an action plan that's dedicated to the needs of the region. And so this is something that we hope to finalize. Once public comments are received and really digested and responded to, we want to finalize that within the next several months and really put the implementation plan into play. The most important pieces of this will not only be implementing it at a variety of levels and scales, levels of government and scales of, of action, but will be in our measuring performance. So there's an entire chapter dedicated to measuring performance and how are we doing as a region and meeting our, our regional goals? So are we reducing our greenhouse gas emissions? And are there enough actions in place that the local communities can take some responsibility as well as different organizations and even down to the individual level? So that's kind of pivoting, we did a lot of work on that in 2020 and we're continuing that work in 2021 as well. I mentioned the housing strategies, which are really, the, the surveys, which are really dovetailing with a larger regional housing strategy. And then circling back to water quality, we are initiating a freshwater initiative. So something that really is looking at an update of our freshwater ponds and lakes atlas and updating that with the best available information about our kettle hole ponds and additional lakes that we have here in the region. And this is an opportunity for us to accurately define the water quality in our lakes and ponds across the region and really get a sense for what strategies we might need to implement to ensure future water quality in some of these areas. So those are very high level. Just wanted to provide a very brief update for you. We didn't hold our One Cape Conference last year, or One Cape Summit, but we're hopeful that that is something that we will host in the fall. And if we do, we'd like to host a Selectmen and Councilors meeting as well. And so we'd love to have the participation of you all. So I'll pause there. I did just want to recognize Tom and if he has some remarks, I'd love to give a few moments and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Christie. Tom is our representative to the Cape Cod Commission. Tom, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Christie. I'll just take a brief moment to talk a little bit about the Climate Action Plan. One of the biggest components of that was the Commission staff doing the research to establish a greenhouse gas inventory, which will give us a baseline to measure against as we move forward to see how successful we are in reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. And when they presented that to the Subcommittee, one of the big facts that stood out was that the transportation sector and especially passenger cars account for over 55% of the greenhouse gas emissions here on the Cape. And we were a little taken aback by how big a contribution each of us makes by driving our cars. And when the Commission met a couple of weeks later, our elder statesman on the Subcommittee is Jack McCormick, the Representative from Yarmouth. And he announced to the Subcommittee that based on what he had learned about the emissions from passenger cars, he had traded in his gas engine vehicle and bought an all-electric Nissan Leaf because he wanted to make an impact and reduce his carbon footprint. And I was quite impressed with it. He spoke about how the perception of all-electric cars is that they're very expensive and that most people can't afford them. And he said he was able to work one into his budget by buying a pre-owned model. And it just made me stop and think that if we're going to attack our climate crisis, we're going to have to work together. We're going to have to change our behaviors. And I think Jack gave us a great example of something that we could all think about in terms of how we impact greenhouse gas emissions here. So those were my comments for tonight. I want to thank Christie and the staff of the Cape Cod Commission. They're, they're amazing people. The research and technical skills that they have, we're very fortunate to have them serving us here on the Cape. And thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Tom. I have a number of board members that have questions either for Christie or for Tom. And I think the first is Board Member Nick Castro. Dean?
Thank you. Thank you. This is a comment and a question for Christie. So, hi Christie, good to see you. I, I think the town of Chatham should be very grateful that in implementing the protection that was awarded to the town in the legislation for the Water Protection Fund that recognized our foresighted previous expenditures in the area of wastewater has really been realized in the fact that we received these very significant grant monies, the millions of dollars. So public should be informed and I think would, will be very appreciative of that. My question is, with respect to the short-term rental tax, does the Commission, or do you have any information as to whether any towns on the Cape have earmarked any portions of their receipts from the short-term rental tax toward particular purposes such as wastewater or even perhaps housing?
So yes, certainly some towns are. And so our focus has been primarily on the component of this that's going toward the Water Protection Fund. And that's, that's the 15 communities on the Cape that are contributing to that. There are other communities that have dedicated additional funding toward other, other components of the planning work that they're doing. And so I think that we, we don't necessarily have that tracked by town, but it's something we could put together if that was, if they're interested. But other towns are doing other things with their short-term rental funding.
That would be helpful to know in the long run. Thank you much. I don't have any other questions. Again, thanks for your presentations.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, our next is Board Member Duncan. Jeff?
Hi Christie, how are you? Nice to see you again. Great presentation. In the town of Chatham, we're surrounded by water. To the north, Bosom Bay, to the east, Chatham Harbor, and to the south, Neatucket Sound. So our coastline and its resiliency is very important to us. I'm just really focused on in your Climate Action Plan, do you address any issues with coastal resiliency? We're, we're paying for dredging. We have dredges here all the time, it seems, to keep our, especially the State Harbor Channel open. Sand shift constantly. We're constantly spending money nourishing beaches and yet we're also building, you know, rock walls against, to the east. So how does your, how does the Climate Action Plan address coastal resiliency?
That's a great question. So the Climate Action Plan is actually building off of work that we've done over the course of the past few years, looking at coastal resiliency. And that's really building on the adaptation side of climate planning. So a lot of that work has been incorporated into the climate plan and really takes into consideration that many of these solutions are, are, are the fact, it's really complicated by the fact that we live in this coastal environment. And so many of our climate issues are actually based on sea level rise. They're based on coastal flooding and all these complicating factors that are really causing many of our climate complications. And so there are certainly a lot of different strategies and actions within the climate plan itself, many of which are related to our coastal processes. So if you have an opportunity to take a look at the plan and provide any feedback there, if there's certainly areas of focus for the town, we've tried to make the plan localized wherever possible. So there's opportunities for the local communities to identify strategies that they may want to implement as well. So I think, I think given, given where we are located in the world, we certainly know that the climate impacts from our coastal waters and is one of the most significant and severe.
Yeah, absolutely. I think you hit the nail on the head with at least three out of your four issues. And the water and wastewater is arguably the number one issue on, on the Cape, never mind coastal resiliency. So again, I echo the fellow, my sentiments of my fellow board members on getting that money down here. It was great. Great job to everybody that you finally got that money down.
It was great, great job to everybody that you finally got that money down here. It's wonderful. And recognize Chatham's investment in its own wastewater infrastructure and water infrastructure. So very thankful. Hopefully we'll have a presentation on it shortly here. So the towns will be plugged in as to what happened here. But thank you very much.
Okay, Corey. Sutman Matters.
Thank you. Kristi, thank you very much for the update. I know you have a lot of communities to check in with and update, but I do appreciate the frequency and the open communication that you provided down in Chatham on all the issues that are going on. So yeah, I know it's only been a couple, you know, it's lots going on, but your input has been very much appreciated. And then to Tom, I thank you for serving the town as our representative. It appears that you very much enjoyed it and I just want to thank you for serving that capacity.
Thanks, Corey. So Kristi, on the freshwater initiative, you're defining water quality. Obviously, you know, we've been reading a lot last summer that, I don't know, there's like a little less than 1,000 ponds on the Cape and there was toxic bacteria issues that were impacting humans. And, and you know, we just had this whole thing about the herring runs and the herring going into freshwater and whatnot. Is this a tracking system that you're putting together to identify the quality of the water? I mean, what's, a little bit about the initiative, just a little bit overview.
Sure. So right now we are in the phase of basically setting the baseline. So we are updating our ponds and lakes atlas so that we can get an accurate sense of what the water quality is at the moment. And that will help us identify where the critical issues are. It will really help us ID the different ponds across the region too. There's legal and jurisdictional pieces of that. The economic components of freshwater are probably more complicated than potentially our marine water quality, which is, you know, provides a different layer of difficulty in administering something like this. But right now we're kind of in that initial planning stages of putting the freshwater initiative together. And so we would like to establish a significant stakeholder outreach process to accompany this. And I think we'll have an interest, I'm already hearing from many people across the region that are interested in participating. They either live on a freshwater pond, they have access to, they visit, and they recognize that there's been deteriorating water quality over time and they want to make sure that that's not something that will impact our environment and our economy as we move forward. And, you know, certainly we recognize that there, those things are so related and we can learn a lot of what we, what was successful during the two-a-way planning process and maybe help and use some of those strategies as we look at freshwater. And it's a different set of issues for freshwater, but I think that we can use some of the lessons that we learned there under the two-a-way plan to help us design the freshwater initiative. So at the moment, it's kind of that baseline setting and updating this ponds and lakes atlas, and then we really hope to kick off this initiative once that data collection component is completed.
Great, thanks. One more question, I think Sutman Kukol has had his hand up. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Kristi and Tom for your presentation. As always, you know, you give a nice succinct talk and I want to thank you in a way, not only for what you're doing, but how you do it. There are a number of, you're hitting on a number of issues that I think that a number of people would even say are, we're in a crisis mode, which includes our coastal resiliency that Jeff brought up, our infrastructure and wastewater, and also our people, housing and so forth. On the housing part of it, the last time I saw anything that had to do with what people are doing as second homeowners was a number of years ago. It had to be at least six, maybe eight years ago. And at that time, they said 40% of the, 40% of our second homeowners were looking to retire. You're either mostly, this was focused on Chatham, but on Chatham and the Cape. But we, over the last, of course, it's COVID related in a way now, but we've seen a number of retirees that have, that are, that are numbers of second homeowners that are retiring and are also volunteering. It's anecdotal. Anyway, what kind of timeframe are you looking at to get, you know, some of the data done, especially on the housing front and wastewater and so forth?
So we're collecting data on a number of fronts as it relates to the population shifts. And I think you hit the nail on the head there with the anecdotal information. We all can sense that there are a lot more people here, but nobody really has that accurate picture. So we're looking at a variety of different sources. We're looking at electricity use data and several other areas to identify what that number looks like. And we can tell, you know, we've got some rough numbers, but we're hoping that this new homeowner survey as well as the second homeowner survey will really help us identify how long people maybe anticipate staying in their homes. Are they returning to the places where they, where they came from or are they going to stay here and potentially either retire or stay in their home here? So that's something that we're hoping to gather that data within the next several months. We'll have the new homeowner survey going out this spring, the second homeowner survey going out towards the end of the summer. We typically do the second homeowner survey every five or so years, so you're probably recalling the data perhaps that we captured that last time around. Then it'll be interesting to compare. We will have some carryover questions from those previous surveys that we've done. So we'll be able to identify if there've been changes and how those second homeowners are using their property and how we can potentially use that data to accurately understand the population shifts that we're seeing.
Yeah, super. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Any final thoughts from either Tom or Kristi? Oh, Jeff's got another question, so.
I was just remiss in not recognizing Tom as well and his service to the town. And I think he really enjoys it and we appreciate it. So thank you, Tom.
And I echo those sentiments as well, I think. I think I might have said it earlier, but I'm not sure. Any final thoughts, Kristi, or Tom, before we conclude?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kristi.
And likewise, just thank you for your time and your support.
No, thank you. Thank you for coming before us and we truly appreciate the update. Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, we are going to move on to our next item, which is a ratification vote for successor collective bargaining agreement with the Chatham Permanent Firefighters Union, July 1st, 2021 to July 30th, 2024. And I believe our HR benefits administrator, Megan Downey, is making, giving us an overview. Or I believe it's Megan or Jill. Hi, Megan, welcome.
Thank you. So I wanted to provide an update on our tentative agreement with the Chatham Permanent Firefighters IF Local 2712. As you know, the towns' unions have all agreed in previous CBAs to the local municipal revenue growth factor. That provides for the formula that we use to calculate the COLA, the Cost of Living Increases for the Year. This coming year, fiscal year 22, provides for a 0% increase for cost of living and the unions are aware of that. However, movement to anniversary step increases are contractual and those costs are built into the FY 22 budget, which is scheduled for the annual town meeting on June 12th. The tentative agreements that I'm going to summarize are not included, are included in the fiscal year 2022 budget and do not require any additional appropriation at town meetings. The first tentative agreement is the position of EMS coordinator will become EMS captain. The job description will be updated to include any and all additional duties and requirements. Language in the CBA referencing the EMS coordinator will be updated accordingly. This isn't a change in personnel or a change in compensation. It's a change just in the title and the responsibilities that are already associated with the position. Dispatch responsibilities will be transitioned to the Barnstable County Sheriff's Communication Center, and this will happen once the Communication Center has the availability to accommodate dispatch for Chatham Fire Department, which is likely two years away. Dispatch duty language will be removed from job descriptions at that time, and this transition will not decrease current staffing practices. The residency restriction in place for all firefighters will allow for an exception of up to three firefighters to reside outside of the current area, which is noted as the existing, in this existing CBA as the towns of Chatham, Harwich, Brewster, Orleans, or that portion of Dennis east of a line described by Route 134 and its extensions north to the bay and south to the ocean at any given time. The updated boundary for the three unit members will be as far west as the Cape Cod Canal. Preference for this change in residency restriction will be granted to new hires and will be done to assist with recruitment. However, the three new hires will have one year from their date of hire to choose to reside outside of the residency area. And if the three new employees do not choose to reside outside of the residency area or have not decided within a year, the opportunity will be available to the rest of the bargaining unit. We are looking to add one additional hour to the minimum time for callback pay for a total of three hours, but this would be for callbacks for incidents which begin between the hours of 2,200 until 0,400. A change in vacation procedure to allow for two firefighters to be granted vacation leave at the same time contingent upon the department increasing in size by the addition of four new firefighters. And this granting of two on vacation during any given shift will not be allowed between June 15th and September 15th each year. Currently, only one firefighter may be on vacation at a time. The addition of June 19th to the list of holidays, excuse me, to the list of holidays outlined in the collective bargaining agreement. Clarification language to be added that education pay, which is currently awarded based on the completion of an associate's degree, will be applied to the completion of an associate's degree or six credits or greater towards a more advanced fire science degree. We're looking to implement the role of a senior fire prevention education coordinator. This position will not increase the size of the Chatham Fire Department, but will be compensated as a stipended role in the amount of $1,500 to an existing firefighter for additional duties. And then we will be looking to add language to change, to amend the process of selecting an officer in charge in the absence of an officer on duty. The officer in charge will now be determined by the on-duty person with the most seniority on the department's lieutenant's promotional list. And if there is no on-duty personnel that are eligible based on the lieutenant's promotional list, then the officer in charge will be determined by seniority based on who is on duty of the shift. So we are respectfully recommending that the board vote to ratify and approve the MOA for a successor collective bargaining agreement between the town and Chatham Permanent Firefighters IF Local 2712, effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024.
Thank you, Megan. So questions or a motion to ratify? Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hello, Megan, thank you. The, say something that the board said the last time when we brought forth the police agreement, and this is, this is also outstanding in our, just our safety, our safety guys, the police and the fire department, they're among the best. And I appreciate that. I do have just, just a question that has to do with the residency requirement. Obviously, that's, I'm going to say obviously. Obviously, it's done because new hires, it's, we can't even, they can't even afford to live in the local area, which includes our surrounding neighborhoods. Now we're going all the way out to the canal. Is that basically what it is?
That's in large part, it is very hard to find personnel who can afford to live in our, in our residence, within our residency restrictions. And it's, it's not just an issue that we're having, but that many of our local communities are having as well.
Yeah, and it's going to get even tougher. Sandwich is not exactly an inexpensive place either. So, okay, thank you. And the other, the other question that had to do with education, and the, the education payment is paid after they get their degree?
Yes, it is. And, and right now, just the way that it's worded, we could have someone who's working towards a bachelor's degree who's earned more credits than an associate's, but the language is just a little muddy and we, in practice, we include them because they do qualify for this, but we just like it to be institutionalized that, that's the case.
Yeah, that's, that's great. No, thank you. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Jeff?
Thanks, Shereen. I just, I do want to plug Megan and Jill and her team. Sometimes this stuff is not easy. And I think we, I think all the contracts are due as of 6:30, 2021. I think they've done a really good job bringing these to conclusion and bringing them before the select board with frankly, a minimum, none, noise, no noise, a modicum of very minimal noise. So I applaud them because I've been through this stuff, went through this a lot for years and it can get really noisy. So I really appreciate their effort. I'm glad Peter asked the question about the residency because I think it does highlight the issues that we have here in town with respect to folks being able to afford housing in town and keeping our firefighters local. So I think we're hitting the nail on the head with our efforts on affordable and attainable housing. And so I would also move this for ratification. I moved to approve the memorandum of agreement for successor collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Chatham Permanent Firefighters IAFF Local 2712, effective July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. That's a three-year deal. That's good. Good job.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Yeah, Peter's seconded. Jill, Jill has her hand up. Jill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to note that it was really a great collaborative effort looking at solutions. So enhanced department operations, retention and recruitment. And the bargaining team, the, I don't want to say on the town side because we're all one town, but the bargaining team included Megan, myself, Alex, the Finance Director, Chief Di Pasquale, Deputy Chief Justin, and it was just a really great conversation. And the union has already voted to endorse this. So the next step is the board ratifying it and then we'll insert it incorporating into an agreement and then we'll have the parties sign that. And that will be the three-year collective bargaining agreement.
Excellent, excellent.
Great. That's really great. Okay, so we have a, Dean?
A question, I know there's a motion that Jeff made. Jill or Megan, can, do our signatures need to be in person or can they be electronic? Should we amend the motion to include that or is it, is this something that's going to happen in a second step?
I think that if the board is, would approve the electrics or digital signing, I think that would expedite the process a lot.
Okay, do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, that's fine. An electronic signature is fine, that's part of the motion.
And you're fine with the second? All right, great. All right, good. Okay, so let's, if there's no other discussion, we'll take a vote. So Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right, great. Congratulations, everyone. Great job. Great job. All right. All right, our final agenda item tonight is the Crowell Road, Route 28, Main Street Intersection Upgrade Project, and state aid Chapter 90 funding allocation. We have a project update from the DPW Director, Tom Temple, and Principal Projects and Operations Administrator, Terry Wayland. I do want to note that we do have our engineers from Howard Stein and Hudson are here to answer any questions, and that is Ms. Carrie Pike, Principal of Transportation and Planning and Land Development, and CEO, Tom Stokes. Also, we, I think we might have Chief Dave and Chief Mark on the call as well to speak about safety. So I'm going to turn it over to, I'm going to turn it over to, I think, Terry or Tom? I'm not sure who's first.
Yeah, this is Terry. So I'm just going to share my screen if that's okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, absolutely. Go right ahead.
Okay, can everybody see the presentation?
Yes, yes.
Great. Okay, and again, for the record, my name is Terry Wayland, Principal Projects and Operations Administrator. To set up discussion this evening on the Crowell Road intersection topic, I'm going to provide a brief overview for some additional context to basically supplement the staff report. The focus of tonight's discussion is on the revised Alternative 3A, which is the traffic signal option for Crowell Road. The board voted to develop a 25% design back in 2019. Changes in the MassDOT and Municipal Planning Organization project readiness requirements to maintain position on the tip now require commitment through the plans, specification, and engineering, or PSNE, phase of the design process. The key elements to be defined, excuse me, the key elements to be refined during the 25% design process include the reduction of the impact footprint. the 25% design process include the reduction of the impact footprint, minimizing right-of-way use, preservation of trees, maintaining the market entrance, reworking crosswalks and islands, improving and balancing on-road bike accommodation in the intersection with community needs, and also specifying signal infrastructure. Since some time has elapsed on this project from its inception over a decade ago, I just wanna highlight some key aspects, including that the roots of this project are in the comprehensive plan, the 2007 Annual Town Meeting Road Article, and the Project Initiation Form, or PIF. Primary safety improvements and equitable access needs are the impetus for this project. To illustrate the project objectives, to correct the identified deficiencies and needs, I would like to highlight the following primary items the design is targeting. A reduction in the incidence of crashes, improved fire department response to West and South Chatham via installation of an optocom system, the provision of handicap or ADA access, which is non-existent in the current intersection, increasing overall pedestrian safety, safer bicycle accommodation, improving intersection geometry for better alignment, updating signal hardware to be able to provide protected phases for safer vehicle and pedestrian movements, and improved horizontal profiles by creating a more level area throughout the intersection. As part of the competitive regional process for state and federal construction funding, this project ranks 11th out of 31 total projects for Cape Cod on the tip. This ranking indicates the project objective score highly across multiple categories, including system preservation and modernization, mobility, safety, economic impact, environmental and health effects, and cost effectiveness. The request this evening is to allocate $237,576.59 of Chapter 9 funding to be encumbered through the PSNE phase of the design process. This will maintain readiness status on the tip for construction funding in federal fiscal year 2026. MASTDOT has approved this value under Chapter 90. The town is not bound to, to spend the full encumbered amount if the project does not move all the way through to the PSNE phase of the design. The current state and federal grant amount programmed for construction in the tip is For the next steps, if the board concurs moving forward with developing a 25% design using Chapter 90 funds, a presentation of the draft 25% design will be made at a future dedicated select board meeting. So with that, I'll conclude my overview for the transition into questions and answers. And as was noted, representatives from HSH or the DPW Director can answer specific questions on construction, project timing, scheduling, and other topics. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Dean?
Thank you, Terry. That was an excellent presentation, very succinct. I appreciate it very much. Madam Chair, are we expecting to hear formal presentations from the others? Or is this the appropriate time to engage in some discussion and Q and A?
I'm not sure, Jill, if, if Tom is gonna say anything, but I think Terry was open to questions right now, so.
Okay. Well, I do wanna acknowledge, I know you're gonna entertain public comment at one point. I did promise one person who communicated to us on behalf of the Unitarian Church, and that is Dr. Margaret Thompson, sent a letter to all of us, and I had some back and forth with her on email. She is out of town. I promised her I would acknowledge receipt of her letter to us, where she, wherein she expressed some interest in revisiting roundabouts and a delay in the project. I just wanna say that I had certainly supported this project going forward previously, but when we had our goals and objectives session with the full board, the town manager and the finance director back, I believe it was in November, I suggested that the board consider discontinuing this project because I, in my view, it lacks substantial public support. And also, as we have observed, and even in connection with West Chatham, but perhaps more particularly, and I support West Chatham, but, but more particularly in connection with the designing of this project, it's very difficult to get the state to make exceptions and concede to accommodations that we feel are more suitable to the Chatham's character. So I'm prepared. I don't wanna preempt others from conversation, but at some point, I'd like to offer a motion to terminate the project and remove, request removal of the project from the tip. But I'll defer on that until, Madam Chair, you feel it's an appropriate time. I think we can use these Chapter 90 monies to enhance the significant progress we've already made around town in repairs to our streets and sidewalks. I think there's a lot more that we can do. And also, maybe we can use some of those Chapter 90 monies to make some remediation to some of the issues that we do see in the Kroll Road intersection, particularly some of the sightlines. And it appears to me, I don't know where the layout, the state layout ends and where the town ownership begins, but there are three roads that are town roads that feed into this Depot Street, Kroll Road, and Old Queen Anne Road. And maybe there are some things we can do on a modest basis to address some of the concerns that, you know, Terry indicated that the town had been seeking to address without a wholesale revision to this particular intersection. So those are my thoughts. I'll hold off on the motion until an appropriate time, and I know we're gonna hear from the public as well. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Dean. Thank you. Cory?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got a handful of questions about this. Because last time we had this conversation, it was clear that this board wanted a more scaled-down version of, of what was being presented at that time, which is the direction we're essentially heading in towards this 25% design. But there, you know, we just finished, or we're finishing up the West Chatham project, and, you know, that's kind of, kind of set the tone toward any larger projects, you know, such as Kroll Road, to, to move forward and, and, you know, there's a lot of strong feelings on both sides of the fence about how to handle this. Now, Chapter 90 funding can certainly be used by the town for, for this purpose. It could also be used for improvements that we so determined for Depot Road and Kroll Road, and obviously Route 28 being a state way, would not be within our jurisdiction to expend those funds on. So I just want clear, you know, verification on that. I do know the element on the, from the fire department and mobility and the traffic passage of the vehicles is a concern of mine. So if we, you know, and it appears that we're gonna have a conversation on a proposed motion by Mr. Castro, if we were to pull away from this project and take on Depot Road ourselves, I would assume, you know, we'd have to engage in the state at some level if we were to tackle the Depot Road intersection. So I'm just trying to understand some of the mechanics of what we may or may not wanna do moving forward. You know, I, I am in favor of trying to address some of the safety issues. You know, it's, it would be prudent to, to take, take on. I know if we were to approve what the proposal in our packet tonight, we're not slated for FY 2026. And my question is, if we were to step away from the tip and take Chapter 90 funds and other financial resources, could we address those safety issues sooner? Or would it be delayed? So I'm just trying to understand clearly some of the mechanics of any potential vote this board takes tonight. You know, I'm not in favor of a full-blown project in this area. You know, we've had multiple, multiple correspondence through the, through email, social media. I do think it kind of speaks for the town as far as, you know, the, the essence of maintaining the character of this, of the gateway to the downtown area. And, you know, it's, you know, I appreciate the fact that we're, I gotta add public comment later because I don't wanna speak for, for everyone. You know, there were a lot of emails that were sent in, a lot to process, and I appreciate all the input that has been sent in forward. But I do have some, are reluctant to moving this project forward, but I wanna be very, very clear, if we do step away from the tip project, where does that leave us as far as funding, timetables, and future impact? So if I can get some of those answers tonight, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Terry, is that something you can answer?
Yeah, well, I think, I think I would defer to DPW Director Temple or, and/or HSH as well on kind of either a hybrid approach or the ramifications of stepping away from the tip.
Okay.
If I can, through you.
Yeah, no, that would be great. I'd appreciate that. I just, the direction we go. Doc, so Tom, are you available? And the HSH folks as well?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Select Board. Yeah, I think the reason for this whole process that we came here for tonight was back when we were going to, we were directed to bring it to a 25% design. There was a unanimous vote to, to go with 3A with the selection from the Board of Selectmen at that time. The problem we had was the Metropolitan Planning Organization decided to go in line and vote to go in line with MAS DOT, their process for introducing all tip projects moving forward. When they did that, instead of us being able to fund just the small amount necessary to finish out the 25% design, to come back to the Board of Selectmen and present everything and then get the, you know, everybody's input before going to the state for the 25% design, what happened was they in turn made us go and, and take four phases and include them, and we have to fund it up to the P and E, you know, PSNE phase, which is phase four. And we had requested from MAS DOT if they would pick up the funding similar to what they did for the West Chatham project. And at that point in time, we had, COVID had just hit, and people were unsure of what's happening with the financing. So they, they got back to us and they declined to put that money. They weren't gonna do it for any communities funding any of the design. So my next question to them was, would you fund the, the design through Chapter 90? Can we fund it through there? And they got back to us and they said that we could. So in order, in order to go ahead and get this point to get the 25% design back to the select board, this is really a mechanism to hold it, to show that we had the money available to bring the design and get that schedule through HSH and to the MAS DOT and get this to the 25% design as the select board had requested. So in a nutshell, we were just trying to comply with the wish of, of the select board, get this to the 25% design, get everybody's input, and, and then move forward at that point. We have reached out, and we are not obligated to have that, each one of those steps, whether we go with the 25% design, the 75% design submission, the 100% design submission, or the PSNE submission, we don't have to finish this all the way through if that's the case. I would suggest that we think about before any type of, you know, vote at the end, we think about the costs associated with this down the road. If they pull this from the tip right now, we have to start the whole process over. We're still gonna have to come up with the funding to the PSNE if this intersection becomes so deteriorated that we really need to do something five years from now, 10 years from now, and it's a long process. As Terry indicated in his presentation, this has been ongoing for, you know, seven to 10 years to get to this point. So we're in the queue, and if we don't have this, you know, you know, permission to move forward to get this 25% design, then they're gonna pull it out totally, and we're out of the, out of the queue. There's a lot of, there's a lot of projects that the state MAS DOT has in, in the line for tip. And a lot of the projects are bigger projects, and this project here is one of those projects that could be, even though it's geared for 2026, FY 2026, it's something that could be completed, and it's not a big project. It's not the extent that you have for the other project in West Chatham, I mean, on Route 28 with the two roundabouts. This is a smaller scale project. A couple of things that Terry had hit on in his presentation. The geometric alignment for the firefighters and the emergency response vehicles coming down Depot Road to get to South Chatham and West Chatham. You know, that's, that needs to be corrected. You get some great differentials that really should be taken care of as part of this design. The lack of pedestrian accessibility, the non-compliance with ADA and AD requirements. It's a high-crash area based on the state. It's, it's in the upper third for all of Cape Cod. So these are all things that, you know, we look at when you're looking at these designs. Is there something that we really wanna see? And can we get the state to go on board with what the board's direction was the last time we met, which was trying to reduce everything down the way that it should be? I, I think we're in a position to do that. I, I think that, you know, now's the time if we're trying to, you know, have them think and before all the regulations change and get worse, and they want more and more space between the, the bike paths and in between the sidewalks. I think we, I think we see where we're at with this 25% design and get it so that we either say yes or no after we get the results back from MAS DOT. That, that's just my, my thoughts, so.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. I, hold, hold on, Cory. I think Jill might have a follow-up and then some additional information, and then I'll follow up with you if that's okay. Jill?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, so, the select board member had asked about, I guess I interpret it as phasing, if we, if we're committing to everything at this point, i- is that what the board would be responsible for? And I, and Tom just turned off his camera, and I, what I believe that we can do is MAS DOT wants to know that there's a commitment, there's a funding commitment. And each phase is identified in the staff report, which is phase one, is what we're looking at completing right now, and that's to get to the 25% design. That could be done, completed. We need approximately $70,000 out of the Chapter 90 state aid funds to finish that portion, and then we would have a public meeting, and then the board would have the opportunity, if you're, if you're amenable to it, to make in a determination at that time. That would give us an opportunity to talk to MAS DOT, to try to look at design exemptions. What's the minimal amount that we can do to improve the safety of the intersection? I don't know for sure that we can use Chapter 90 funds, and maybe Tom can weigh in, to do the needed corrections that are needed for Depot Road. That might still require engineering and a more detailed assessment, and so I don't know what that cost would be, but it's something definitely we can look into. Traditionally, if we want MAS DOT to do any improvements to the intersection in their right-of-way, we have to make a request. They typically will put it on a maintenance schedule, and they'd cover the cost for it. We can see if we can expedite it. But right now, I mean, there's no crosswalks, there's no curb cuts or anything for accessibility to get people from Kroll Road, you know, to the, the shopping center complex and back, as you know. So you have all experienced the intersection. If we were to just carpenter mentalize this into phases, phase one's probably the most important that to get us to finish the 25% design, and we think that we could have that design finished by September to allow for a public meeting to be held at the end of September.
Okay. Cory, if you can hold on one more moment, I think Carrie Pike would like to weigh in, and then, thank you, Jill. Carrie, welcome. From HSH. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to address a couple other of selectmen matters questions regarding sort of taking the money and working on just parts of the intersection. You certainly could work on the town-owned roads, but if you're working on anything that's within the MAS DOT right-of-way, that would still require an access permit from that would still require an access permit from DOT and they would still have to review everything. So you're still in that situation where they have to give you a permit to actually do the construction. So things, um, where like some of the ramp locations, for example, might actually be in the intersection. So you couldn't fix them without having, or put them in at all, for that matter, um, without having MassDOT review. Um, does that, did that, did I answer that? I hope, or is that clear?
Well, yeah, that's, that's part of my follow-up because, um, while, well, a whole lot of my comments about the potential motion to sever this, uh, from the tip. But if, if, it, the, the fire department, uh, concerns are, are, are what I'm focused on right now. Obviously Depot is town on road. We could address it to some level, but you just made the comments about it. You know, obviously being adjacent to the 28th and State Highway, um, there's certain elements that we'd have to have to keep in consideration for, from a permitting, processing, you know, planning perspective. So that is, that is where I'm, where I'm hung up on a little bit is if we were to pull away from the tip, um, one, what type of process would we expect in dealing with the Depot intersection because of the adjacence to the State Highway? And two, uh, from a timing perspective, could the, um, issues that we're looking to address, the town is looking to address, would it be sooner 2026 or would we be looking much further out beyond 2026? So it would be from a timetable perspective, would it be advantageous, advantageous to us to step away? Uh, or, 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 uh, would be penalized?
So from a timing perspective, so you would have to go through the access permit process, which has the same steps. So if you're doing things that are going to alter State Highway, you still have to go through the 25, 75, 100 PS and E process. And Mast Dot still reviews everything at each stage. Um, timing wise, I agree with what, um, Director Temple said earlier that, you know, if the project is ready on the tip, there is a possibility, um, that some of the larger projects aren't ready and this one gets pulled up sooner than 2026. Um, and I, I think, you know, on an overall design, in terms of finishing the design, depending on how much scaling back the timetables to finish the design, never mind what happens with the timetable of the tip are similar.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, all right, Jeff?
Yeah, uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, oh boy, um, I guess I have quite a bit to say. Um, the last time, and to echo Selectman Castro's comments earlier in this meeting, um, when the project was brought before us the last time, I sort of sighed and said, oh my God, not another roadway project and oh yeah, Crow Road has been on the table for a long time. So I think not only do the members of the Select Board suffer from some roadway PTSD, if you will, but, you know, it's been, we, we've been, we've been dealing with for a while. However, I don't want roadway PTSD to get in the way of good decision-making or contemplative decision-making. Um, so I, I, I just want to make sure I understand, um, I understand the, the, the money and the timing on this project. I, I think I understand that we are now being allowed to use Chapter 90 monies. And Jill's saying we need about 70K of those Chapter 90 monies to get to the 25% design phase. Is, is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and when we get to that, so, so, and I don't want to cannibalize any other high priority use for those Chapter 90 monies, should we move forward with it? So I guess my next question is what we're going to use that 70K for? And I hope it's, I hope it's not sidewalks because we got, I, we got sidewalk issues here in town we have to deal with. But so, well, what if we take that money away from Tom, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Well, right now we've got, uh, we, we just completed three projects and got reimbursed the money back from Chapter 90. We have seven on the books currently and two more are almost winding down. As part of that was the Cross Street Reconstruction and part of Main Street, uh, that we ended up having, needing more money. So we, we used Chapter 90 money for that. So, um, right now, um, we've got earmarked, um, there's nothing that's being pulled off. There's future things that we put in. We get approximately about $341,000 the last couple of years from Chapter 90 coming in. So what we do is we pull that together and, and, and put the projects together as we move forward. So we've got Bridge Street coming up, which is already included in the, um, in the funding for Chapter 90 and the reconstruction of that after we put the new water mains in and all that. So, um, this, there's nothing really right now that's, that's going to be put on hold. We did find out, as I mentioned during the budget process, we requested to find out about the salt shed. And that's a new development where they said we could utilize part of Chapter 90 money for that. So that's there, but I mean, we're, we're still building up that kitty and we're hoping that we can buy more time and get all that paper from that as well. So, um, there's, there's a good nest egg there that we've been doing a lot of projects over the last several years and, you know, checking them off our list and we can continue to do that. And we're trying to, uh, do the road construction then in conjunction with the other projects that we have for utility. So, um, you know, I think we're in good shape.
Just, just, I have, I do have a few follow-ups. So i- if, uh, we would have assumed the use of the Chapter 90 monies and we got to 25%, what's the town's, we encumber that 70K, if you will, and use those monies. What's the town's future commitment for funding this project of the 2.9 million that they're talking about it's going to cost?
Well, that, that, that would be the grant money from, from the tip that pays for the construction. The only thing we would have to do is continue the design funding out of, out of this, out of the, uh, Chapter 90 money to finish that design, which is the 237 total.
Okay.
Less, less the 70 that Jill mentioned. And that just stays in line and as we complete each phase, it gets deducted off of there. Um, so I mean, that's how we would pay for that. So we're, we're not taking it from the other tax projects that we, we would have put in money for or, or asked for under our, um, you know, capital request. So this is stuff that we're just trying to.
So, so the act, the encumbrance would be 237 from Chapter 90?
Yes. The total for that, and that brings you to the PS and E, which is the fourth phase out of the five. The last phase is just the construction and the, um, construction and bidding process, which is approximately 33,000. So, and we can't pay for that from Chapter 90 because it's part of construction. So that we would have to come up with at the end for, once, once it goes out to bid. So, I mean, we're, we're pretty, and pretty all set in line where, where we needed to be without taking any money from any other pools that are really geared towards, so.
My concern is thus, i- i- if, if we beg off the tip at number 11, we're going to wait a long time to have them readdress this issue, whether they do it or we do it. Uh, to Cory's earlier points, we do it alone on Depot. We're going to wait, we're going to wait a while. I think, I think if we attack Depot alone, um, you know, I think we may not have the best friend in Mast Dot and, and helping us on Route 28. Um, I think that if we, if we get off the tip now, we could wait as many as 10 years to, to, to get back on or five to 10. I, I don't know. But, so my fear is, okay, I understand, um, you know, we, I understand that we're, you know, we're sick of roadway construction, but I think this would be five years out and we'd lose out on the tip and 2.9 and et cetera, et cetera. So I, I'm rethinking this one, even though I was negative to start, uh, the last time I heard it. Then I would, I would like to hear from the police and fire departments if we could. Um, and I, you know, um, I think access, regrading the area, um, getting ADA access and, and, um, is important to have pedestrian-friendly, you know, uh, entrance to the town. I, I was approached by the UU as well. It wasn't Dr. Thompson, it was other members of the church and, and they very much want to be plugged into this process and, uh, want to know what, what we're up to and what, what we're planning and just, just want to know. We've got big trees there, there's walkways planned. They, they just feel as though they need to be plugged in. So those are my thoughts. Again, I was initially, you know, negative, but the more I think about it, I just don't want to bite our nose to spite our face, get kicked off a tip that's going to take us 10 years to get back. And should we do it alone? You know, I think we may struggle a little bit to do it, do it alone. Those are, those are my thoughts, you guys. Thanks.
Okay, Jeff, I just have a quick question. Um, so Jill, when you mentioned, um, what did you do? You mentioned exemptions of, um, we could be, we could get to 25% or we could approve, uh, approve funding to go forward with the 25%. And in the meantime, you can be looking at improvement exemptions that we may be able to, um, to downsize or scale down the, um, the project. Is that possible? I'm not sure who I'm asking the question. Maybe Carrie can answer that. Um, are there exemptions to, um, some of the things that have been identified, which are, you know, the handicap ADA, pedestrian safety, the bikeway, the geometry issue? Um, and, and the, and the signals. Is there a way to downsize that at all through the process as we go forward with exemptions?
So.
I, I guess, let me do an example.
Yeah.
Okay. So if we, um, so if we said, we don't, uh, you know, we don't want to fund or we don't, we don't want to include in the design, the bikeway. I- i- is there a mechanism or, or, or mechanism? Let's just say bikeway is the example, because I can't think of anything else right now. Um, is there a mechanism in place that says that we can, uh, we can try to get an exemption from the bikeway, which would widen the road?
So yes, there is a process. Mast Dot has a design exception process.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, there, there are various criteria that we have to go through to say, here's why we think that we should be granted an exception. We can make those requests. Um, I know, I think in, in talking with the town team about this, again, um, it seems folks are concerned about the, particularly about the bike lanes on the west side of Route 28. So, you know, that can be one of the things that, as part of the 25% design package, one of the things we have to do, if we have any, there's, there's, I think it's 11, Tom Stokes, can you, is that right? Do I have that right? 11 controlling criteria? If we want exceptions from any of those criteria, there's a process for documenting that and it go, it gets submitted with the 25% design to Mast Dot.
Okay.
Um, and then they, they review them, you know, they can question, comment, et cetera. And then they say yay or nay, you can have your design exception. So we can ask for those, we can go through what the, what the rationale is going to be for them. We can't guarantee that we're going to get them.
So safety is one of the biggest concerns as far as the pedestrian for, and the ADA issues. Those are clear. I mean, if anybody has tried to cross the street from Crow Road over to the market, it's, it's a challenge. And, you know, we have a public housing down the road on Crow Road. So there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that, that traverses that area and it's, it is, it's a real tough. Uh, then that's a big concern for me. Um, but I'm also very concerned about, um, making sure a project like this is really scaled down to what we actually need and, and not creating, um, aesthetic changes to the area, especially in light of, you know, the vista to the church and the trees and everything else. So if we get to 25% and we haven't been able to get exa- exemptions or we don't feel those exemptions are going to be, um, we're capable of that, um, having those approvals, we can kill this as a board, correct? We can just say, we're not going to approve the 25% to move it forward to Mast Dot. I'm correct, right?
Well, we wouldn't have an answer necessarily on the design exceptions before we submit the 25% design. But if they came back to us and if we submitted it and we, they came back to us and said, we will not grant your design exceptions. For, as an example, you have to put those bike lanes in on the west side of Route 28. And the town decided that they didn't want that. Yes, it is your prerogative to pull the project.
Project, okay.
At that point.
All right. So that gives, um, a, a rather fair, um, assessment of, of what I was worried about. Uh, Peter, I'm, you've waited a long time. Thank you.
That's all right, Madam Chair. Hey, uh, although Chief Pasquale's, uh, has his hand up, maybe it'd be better for him to speak first.
Okay.
And I can tell.
Sure. I'll defer, uh, I'll defer you to Chief Dave. Chief Dave?
Because that's one of my questions anyway.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I feel really strongly about this project, as you can well imagine. When I first heard about the project, my first thought was, oh no, not another rotary or roundabout. But this is an intersection that is really dangerous for us. Our access to West Chatham and South Chatham is down Depot Road. Otherwise we have to try to go through Post Office Square, which we can't make the turn if there's any traffic on the road or we have to go out to the rotary and come around. But when we get on that hill, the traffic heading west on Main Street, they can't see us coming. And when we get to that intersection, we have to look in four directions before we can go through that intersection. And we've had numerous close calls. We don't, we stop when we come to that intersection. But when we get on Depot Road, we're already on the wrong side of the street. And, you know, the solution to me is the, 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 the best solution is the opticon system that's going to be on a traffic light. And I don't know how we go through this process without putting new traffic lights there. And if people don't know how an opticon works, you know, the ambulance or the engine has a light that flashes, um, that connects to another receiver on top of the traffic lights. And it will turn all four directions red so we can come through and not have to worry about traffic coming through the other directions. Um, it doesn't always work that way, but the, these are all over Cape Cod. They're in, um, they're on 137, they're in Willow Street in Yarmouth. And what it does is the direction you're traveling, it gives you the green light. But the way we could work this is the other four directions would have a red light. Um, this is, I, I really feel impassioned about this. This is really important. Uh, I don't think, I know everybody's tired of these projects. I don't think anybody's more tired of them than the Chatham Fire Department. But I feel really strongly that we need to do something there. And we're already looking at 2026 and I won't be the chief then. But I know this is going to be important down the road and I, I implore you to please support this.
Okay. I just, I, I also want to make it clear that the revised alternative plan number three did not include a rotary or a roundabout, as you said.
Right.
Right. Okay, so let's not, we need to kill that rumor that's been all over social.
No, 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 I'm just saying that, that was my first thought.
Right, of course.
I know it's the traffic lights and, but we need a traffic light. That's, that's the important part of this.
Okay. Um, Peter, if you can hold on one more second, I see that, uh, Chief of Police.
Yeah, that was my second question.
Okay. All right. So Chief Mark?
Yes, hi, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I'm not going to advocate passionately either way, uh, on this project. Uh, but what I like to do is just put out some, uh, you know, some data that was provided. Um, th- this intersection generates about three accidents per year. Over the past 13 years, anyway. Um, about, only about five of those involved injuries. Thankfully, none of them involve serious injury, but five of them did involve injuries. And, uh, so that averages about, you know, one accident with injuries, about two and a half. And, uh, again, I'm not, I'm not, you know, you decide what you want to do with these, these figures, but that's, that's about what it generates. Um, again, thankfully, we haven't had any serious injuries, but, but there have been injuries at, uh, uh, at that intersection. Um, I, I've also, you know, obviously going through that intersection, you know, day after day, time after time, sometimes numerous times per day. Um, I've seen a number of close calls during the summer. Uh, the difficulty of making a left-hand turn, uh, uh, obviously everyone knows, but it's exacerbated at that intersection. Um, the, uh, amount of horn beeping and horn honking that you hear in the summertime is, is common. Uh, which speaks to the, the issue of, of how the, the intersection is currently constructed. And obviously it's been brought up about the pedestrian issue. So I, I think probably the best way to describe this intersection, it's, it's not the most highly dangerous intersection based on the data. Um, but it does generate some, uh, some level of, uh, car crashes and, and some level of injury uh, from those car crashes. So, uh, so that's, again, just, you know, I'm just kind of reporting what, what the facts are and, and what the information is and what the record is. Um, but the, just from a, you know, my own perspective, I would just describe this intersection as. Um, but the, just from a, you know, my own perspective, I would just describe this intersection as kind of messy and awkward. Um, it, it's just kind of a messy and awkward, uh, intersection. And as, uh, Chief Dave, uh, from the fire department indicated, uh, you know, the, the difficulty of and delay, quite frankly, the delay of getting fire apparatus or ambulances through that intersection, uh, especially during the summer when, you know, the roads are already, uh, pretty heavy with traffic and, and a lot of activity. So, so, uh, again, I'm, I'm just putting that out there from my, you know, observations, my perspective. Um, you know, I, I wish there was a, a nice, simple fix to it, but, uh, I, I would just encourage to, you know, the select board to at least just, at least just, uh, go the next step further with it and, and see what the design, uh, generates in terms of, uh, you know, what, what can be done to improve this. It's not, it's not the worst intersection uh, I've seen, but it's, it's far from the best. And, uh, it certainly could use some level of improvement. Just my thoughts.
Thank you. Chief, appreciate it. Um, okay. Finally, Peter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One more question and then I'm going to make a comment. A comment. It has to do with HSA. Uh, Carrie, on, on, uh, in the, in developing the design that you're going through, you heard what we said before. Um, you have to build, is, is this correct statement? Are you building what's being done there according to, um, directly according to Mast dot requirements? And I guess the answer is yes. You know, and, and you talked about exceptions. But how do you do that design, one? And two, uh, which will be part of my comments, uh, Mast dot has guidelines for, for neighborhood centers, Crow Road, West Chatham, uh, Cornfield, our neighborhood centers, they're in our long-range plan. And that document, uh, should give them or give us, uh, uh, at least more, uh, availability to, to have something less than a major intersection there. Now, the question is, is that a correct statement or do you have to do some more on it? And then I want to make a couple of comments.
So yes, Mast dot has guidance. Um, the design that we have been, you know, that's been brought forward, the alternative 3A that Terry had up earlier, does have narrower lanes um, than what we would design, say, if we were looking at, um, kind of a more highway feel road, I would say, even if it was a, you know, not a limited access road, but just sort of a, something that's not going through this kind of context. So we have done some of that. Um, I think we certainly can look to see if there's an ability to, like, I think we were using 11-foot lanes and it's been a while since I've looked at the exact dimensions, so don't 100% quote me on this, but I think we were using 11-foot through lanes on Route 28 and 10-foot turning lanes, which is pretty narrow. The standard lane width that Mast dot uses is 12 feet. Um, and so I think we, and, and you do have to keep in mind too, that you do have sometimes larger vehicles that need to come in to make deliveries to businesses, things like that. So you don't want to go so narrow that those vehicles, you know, and things like your fire apparatus and ambulances and things like that. Um, so I think we've done some of that already. We certainly can take a look at, but my recollection is that we, when we brought forth the, um, concept that you have in front of you, we already had done some of that. Um, the, the, I think the question may be more on the things like the shared use path that's along the church property that's in the current alternative that you have, the bike lanes on the west side of Route 28. Um, those are the kind of things where we can, I think, potentially look for the exceptions that'll kind of, now granted, those are outside of the traveled way width, right? So the, you know, they're outside of where you would put a car. Uh, but there's still things that contribute to the feel of how big the intersection is and that kind of thing.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, I just want to make a comment. You know, I, I go way back to this when it first was brought to the board, even before I was on it and I was on the planning board, but I, I, I was a citizen at the time and I, I, uh, voiced some concern about how big it was at the time and it didn't fit the character of the, of, of what Chatham is. And, and also that it, you know, we, I mentioned the guidelines for neighborhood centers, uh, within DOT. You know, we, we've, um, we, we, we received a lot of, of, uh, of emails, a number of emails. And, and the implication of a lot of those emails is we're making a decision on whether we're going to do construction. And I guess the question to me, uh, is just, uh, kind of what I, what I've heard just from Corey and also Jeff in a way, and also Shereen. To me, this is not a, to me, the decision, uh, to move ahead is to spend $70,000 right now out of Chapter 90. Um, given the, 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 the issues that we have at that intersection, you know, it, it, you could say, as, as Chief Paulina said, you know, it's not the worst intersection, but they have crashes there. And as Chief Dave said, you know, we have a problem getting across, getting into the, into the intersection. Uh, you know, and it slows, it potentially slows us down. We have an ADA repo- uh, uh, problem, uh, as far as crosswalks. We have, uh, we have lighting that is, uh, stoplights that are, that are not proper. And they, you know, and you have all of these issues. And the question to me is, do we go ahead with, 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 with this 90 or $70,000 to get to a chap, uh, to, uh, a, uh, a 25% design review? And what if I heard Jill correctly, that would be this fall. And I'll, I'll be perfectly honest with you. I, I was, I'm, when I came, when I first read this and I looked at the picture, I'm going, nothing's changed. Come on, give me a break. It was 2019 and you haven't changed anything. But in some ways, I understand what's going on. But for me, just as you said, that bike path going west because potentially we're going to have more bike paths all the way down Main Street, that's a no. That, that's, that's, that doesn't sell for me. We're not going to widen, at least I hope we don't ever widen that, our main street. Because what that is, is a direct line into, into our town. And Crow Road is the front door. And it, and I agree with you that the, 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 uh, the multi-use path, what's the sense of that when you're coming into, into, uh, up towards a, uh, community center and you have a very small two-lane road? It, it, that intersection has to be this, you know, similar to what it is. But I have taken that road, I come off a Crow Road and I have to make a left turn there. I do it all the time. And yeah, there, lots of horn honking and a lot of questions happen. Whether it's the most dangerous or not, when you put all those things together, I have a problem with safety within that intersection. And I understand people say, no, it's not so bad, but take a look at all of it. But having said that, I'm, I'm sort of leaning now, I was going to say, I, I don't know if I want to continue with this. I'm sort of leaning now with saying, I'm, you know, I'll lean to it. I want to hear what people have, other people have to say. I'm leaning toward it to get to September. And believe me, it comes back the same way and Mast dot won't change. I have no compunction about saying, no, we shouldn't do that. Even with those safety concerns, because it, to me, they're trying to, that they, and it's, you know, they're a big organization. They worry about safety also. But for, for them to hold our feet to the fire for something like this, for some, for something that could be done smaller and still be safe, I, I, I don't think we should put, we should, we should, we should step back from that. And I just want to say that so that you understand it. So when you talk to them, they understand it. It's in their, it's, it's in their guidelines, for heaven's sakes. That's one thing. And I understand, you know, what they did and part of the things that we wanted to do in West Chatham, and they wouldn't give in on certain things, but they did on others. And, and this is different. West Chatham was to narrow the road. This is going to expand it and we don't, in my opinion, I, I, I will not vote for that. But I'm willing to see what we can good do with $70,000, I think. So I'll, I'll sit and listen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Uh, we have Corey and then Dean. Corey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a follow-up because, um, you know, I think it's safe to say there's a, there's a fair amount of our citizens that would be very content to see this project, um, taken off the tip and then put away. Um, and frankly, the only thing that causes me pause on that is the concerns of our fire and rescue. Uh, because those are very legitimate concerns, um, that impact the entire community. Um, and I'm trying, and I'm struggling with how the best to address that because, um, as I asked before, what would happen if we did pull away? So my question is, um, a matter of timing on this decision. Um, would it be prudent for us to, before we commit to using these Chapter 19 funds, uh, within the next week or two, whatever, whatever, whatever timing is, um, to have, to have a public engagement meeting and go over the plans as they are now, nothing needs to be changed, to do an inventory of the items that we're looking at for exceptions and waivers? To look at the philosophical direction we're taking these designs in, because I think we're pretty clear. We, we, we're not looking for an expansive, uh, impactful, uh, design for this intersection. We, we know we don't want to go in that direction. Um, but to get a clear inventory of the, of the scope that we are considering moving forward. Um, because philosophically, if the support's not there, there's no need to spend the funds. Um, but I am extremely concerned of, of, of jeopardizing the safety of the fire and rescue element of this intersection. Um, but frankly, it's one of the few things that's keeping me from, you know, supporting, potentially supporting, uh, just putting this thing to bed. So, um, is there time to do it in a public engagement meeting, uh, solely focused on this topic? Or is that procedurally or mechanically just not feasible?
Go ahead, Jill.
So the impetus for this meeting was that, uh, through the MPO process, they have their monthly meetings. We were, we've already been pushed back. Uh, as you might recall, a couple of years ago, we were at the 23, FY 23 and 24. And because of the readiness requirement, we were pushed back. The, uh, MPO and Tom Sterling, he's the, um, the, uh, chairman of the joint, uh, technical council that does, uh, the technical work of the MPO could speak to. It's that, it's, there's been no activity or, or I should say, there's been activity, but there's, there's no project readiness to the point where there's a commitment that would keep us on the tip. So there are a couple of different things at play. One, Mast dot and MPO is looking for us to engage the designer to the P S and E portion of it. And what we talked about tonight, we can engage HSH as the designer and put it into phases so that at a certain phase, whether it's phase one to get you through the end of the 25%, if, if we can't get those design exemptions and, or there's no support by you, then we, we shelf the project and it's shelved for however long, but it will be off the tip. So that was the impetus today. Tom's been able to hold them off for a couple of months and we had COVID. But we, we know that there's still more work to do. So having a, a 25% uh, public discussion will be almost exactly the same meeting that we had on September 30th, 2019, understanding there's different people that might be here. Uh, but there's really no new information to share. And if the board's okay with that, then certainly we can move forward with that. And then, uh, Madam Chair, if I can just, I'm kind of, uh, stating what, what Tom has told me. I don't know if you want to hear directly from Tom on it.
Tom, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
So I, I think the, the big thing is, you know, you know, they've, they've set their mind with the, with respect to the MPO and, and Mast DOT as far as the requirements. If we, if we don't move forward and get to the 25% design and put our completion schedule in through a HSH into Mast DOT, they're, they're going to pull the project. And that's why, you know, we're trying to just get this in line, show them that we have the, the necessary funding, show them that it's there, let a HSH put together a completion schedule showing that we're going to be submitting plans to them in September and to the department, to this department in the town in August, so we can take a look at what, what's proposed, go over, even reach out to Mast DOT, talk about some of these waivers, see if they're going to grant it. At least we're, we're in a position, we know exactly what we're up against. And the plans are pretty close and that we take into all the public comments and then move to the 25 if we can get to that point. If they get the plans and they're, they're not completed, they're not going to accept them until they're to a point where they can review them. So I think, I think that's why we're, we're, we're here. We're just trying to get it to that point, get a completion schedule into Mast DOT, so we don't get pulled out of the tip, so we don't lose all the work that's come to this point. And, you know, I think that's it. I mean, it, it's, you know, it's, it's a tough thing. And I know there's a lot of pros and cons with, with a lot of, uh, you know, residents and their, you know, opinions on either way and some roundabouts, some light traffic lights, but, you know, I think when we look back at this last September, um, you know, we were, we were all, it was a, you know, unanimous vote to get it to the 25 and that's, that's all we're trying to do. Your request was trying to get it there, so.
Okay. All right. Um, we've got Dean and then Jeff.
Yeah.
I don't know if Dean's going to, Dean's going to make a motion or not.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait until after the public comment before offering the motion, although I can certainly read the sense of the House, but I may offer the. Expect I'll offer the motion anyway. Um, just a couple of questions. You talk about being pulled off the tip. Is it being pulled off the tip or being dropped down to a, 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 a later, a later year out? Whoever, Jill or Tom, whoever, we don't understand, or Carrie, whoever wants to answer that question.
It's my, it's my understanding from being at the Joint Transportation Commission meetings that if you don't have, if you're not in the queue and you don't have everything up to the P S and E for funding, they, they're pulling you off the tip. Because you're, you're holding up other communities that have vested and shown that they have the necessary funding to move forward. And you're not doing anything to show that you're moving the project forward. So they want to have everybody ready and to get them in years so that they're, they can not lose money as they're going forward because every year you delay, it costs communities more money to get that project through and to get it out to construction and complete it. So I think that's the, the intent from Mast DOT and the MPO. And Carrie, if you want to say anything further on that side of it, I mean, feel free.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that. Uh, this question is for Carrie because I, I can't remember who initiated the exchange, but the question, I mean, I think it was Shereen that asked the question. When can you get answers to the exemptions? Is it once the 25% plan is filed? Or be, can you get them before? Cause we had been talking, I know we've had COVID for a whole year. But when, but in September, I think we had identified several areas for possible accommodation and we're going to have some informal back and forth on that. And we haven't really, this is the first time we're hearing back on it. So I guess I want to know, um, because I think there's, I've heard some suggestion that, well, we'll know by, uh, when, uh, when the 25% comes in in September, what's going to be exempted and what's not. But I, I'm not hearing that.
Well, so I think as Tom Temple suggested, we can ask for some feedback, but we won't get an official sort of verdict on our request for the design exceptions until we submit formally. Um, we can kind of take the temperature of what they think about them. And before we submit and we'll, you know, that would be what we would come back to you to present is the plan and with the, you know, with the caveats that we're going to be asking Mast DOT for these exceptions. Here's the rationale that we're going to use. So I think we can get, we can get a sort of a feel for what they think about them, but I don't think we'll get an official answer until we officially submit. They've gotten kind of sticky about that.
Have we already not done some of that? Well, we were going to try to, from my understanding back in September, that there would be some informal communication back and forth on, on this. And maybe COVID has impacted that, because I know a lot of the state offices are staffed.
Yeah, we haven't. We had had some conversations with District Five before. And I can't remember if our last meeting was after the September meeting with you all or af- or not. Um, but yes, we haven't really had much communication. As you said, um, Mast DOT's staff are all still working from home as well. So there's not been that communication with District Five to follow up.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate, uh, why you're all coming before the board tonight. I understand that. And I certainly have great respect for the views and opinions of our two public safety chiefs. Uh, I, I also want to just mention, because I neglected to mention it before. And then I'll, and I'll be quiet until we've heard from others.
and now I'll be quiet until we've heard from others, that I've had, in the past 36 hours, I've had communications with three members of the Finance Committee. And each one of them thinks we should scuttle this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Jeff?
Yeah, I wonder if the Finance Committee, after having heard Chief Di Pasquale's comments, would feel the same selectmen of Castro? Because they're they're a clincher for me. I know which way I'm going to go on this. And I think we need to keep on the tip until we had to see what that 25% design phase looks like. It's monies that we already have. We're encumbering dollars rather than expanding them from new resources, new sources. So I think it's important to at least get a look at that 25% design. But I also think it's important to make sure that we touch base with our constituents, our voters, our taxpayers, and we get to get to know what they're thinking and feeling about this project, most notably the folks that are affected by it at that very intersection. You're talking about the the folks that own businesses there, the Unitarian Church, et cetera, et cetera. So but I I know, and the clincher for me was was Chief Dave. That's the clincher for me. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, well, if there's no more comments or questions from the Select Board, then I'll I'll reach out to the public for their comments. And then we'll go for a motion. So I I see that there's an Anne that has her hand raised. I'd appreciate it if you give us your full name when you speak. Anne?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm trying to get my video, but that's okay. I'm Anne Dixon. I live in West Chatham. So I'm very well aware of the West Chatham Rotary, obviously. And I'm fine with it. I'd like to see the lights on at night and then I'll give you my final decision. But as far as this, I am very thankful for the Zoom meetings that have been happening during COVID, because it makes it very easy for the public to queue in. I mean, I can do my laundry, I can make my dinner, and I can still stay on top of what's happening. I came on this meeting because of, I remember the September 19th meeting, and I thought it was a good solution to this awkward intersection that really needs correction, like the Chief of Police had mentioned. And I was concerned due to social media, but I like to check things out. So thank you, Shereen, for mentioning that there will be no Rotary, because that's what I gleaned from the September 2019 meeting. I believe it definitely needs to be correct. I corrected. I have the left turns from the Village Market from onto 28 and from Crow Road, the left turn onto Main Street. People can overlap if they don't watch it. And I think some mild corrections could be in the works. So I hope you proceed with what you had all voted on, as I've heard. I'm thankful to all the people and select people and the DPW and all of that for commenting on it. And I concur that it should go forward and should be as simple. I know it costs money, I'm a taxpayer, but I think you should strike while the iron is hot. So thank you for listening to me and I appreciate it as a citizen and taxpayer of Chatham, which I love.
Thank you, Anne. Our next person to comment is Gloria Freeman. Gloria, welcome.
Thank you. I had hoped I would not have to speak tonight, but since I'm not sure how the Select Board members will vote, I guess I I have to. I encourage you not to go forward with the proposed changes at this intersection according to Option 3A. It is overkill, just as the West Chatham Roadway Project was overkill. I presume that some of you, most of you, are having buyer's remorse, like so many of us are, whose tax dollars paid for the West Chatham design that was far too extensive for the amount of available land. Besides that, the design was shoddy and dangerous. And there is nothing we can do about it now with the lanes that are too narrow and curbing that slits tires and poor visibility. None of us knows.
Gloria, do you have comments on this project?
Yes. None of us knows the final result of the West Chatham Project until it's completed. But we can imagine what will happen June through September. I guess that thought and fear has crossed your minds. With all due respect to Ms. Pike, until we do know, why move forward with the Crow Road Project? Especially with HSH, Howard Stein Hudson Associates, the design firm which created the poor design we have seen so far in West Chatham. Modifications from their design have had to be made, walls having to be built, entrances widened, on and on, problems that the design firm should have anticipated. Mast dot did not want to proceed with the Crow Road Project. They made it clear that this project is owned by Chatham's Select Board. And yet they want to tell us what to do. I hope that you will abort the project if it can't be severely restricted. Why won't Mast dot tell us if the exemptions will be granted before we have to make another financial commitment? It is unreasonable to expect us to continue to spend tax dollars without our knowing about exemptions. And thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Gloria? Okay, our next speaker is Elaine Gibbs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. HSH hasn't been here since September of 2019. And before that, I think it was over a year. So I would like to remind the public, because it wasn't done tonight, about the scope of this project. The plan calls for widening the Main Street and Crow Road intersection from the current roadway of 26 feet to 55 feet to include bike lanes in both directions abruptly ending when the roadway narrows back to 26 feet on the to the east and west. Five-foot asphalt sidewalks, adding a turning lane that is going to require huge mast arm traffic lights. The intersection will almost double in size from 3,500 square feet of pavement to 6,000 of asphalt. And that's because Crow Road, Depot, and Queen Anne are all going to be widened at the intersection, funneling bikes onto a state road. And Depot Street is expected to turn into a one-way street. It is going to result, by their own design, in significant loss of the Meeting House lawn and the large trees on Main Street to the east, going up the hill towards the post office. Trees along CVS and the church will also be lost on Queen Anne. It will require a sharp right turn into the Village Market as a separate breakdown lane to Queen Anne would be removed. And I would disagree totally with Tom Temple. This is a big project as it is designed, because four, four or five roads have to be dug up for a fair amount of space. And there's going to be a lot of grading. In terms of the exemptions, I am totally perplexed by Ms. Pike's comments tonight saying that they could move forward. We may or may not have DOT's response by the time we finish the 25%. I would go back to the fact that we first learned that there were exemptions in 2017. And those exemptions take into account environmental, scenic, aesthetic, and preservation impacts on historic communities. We asked from moving forward at that point, once we saw their design, your board asked if we could get exemptions on the bike lanes, on some of the sidewalks, on the mast arms, and on the this basic size of this project. In 2018, she said, I'm kind of prodding DOT on a weekly basis to try to get some feedback on the exemptions. Tom Courier hasn't gotten my weekly email. I've tried to gently prod without being annoying. We're testing the waters. It's not in the official waiver process, which is a lot of work, paperwork. We're taking their temperature, which she used again tonight. Not not, no point going through the work of filing a formal application if Mast DOT won't approve. On September 30th of 2019, you asked the question again. Three times this board has gone to them asking for these exemptions. And she said she was going to file the the formal paperwork, but then it was too much work. And when pressed by this board, she said she would go ahead with all the paperwork. But it was her opinion, based on her conversations with Tom Courier, that they would not be approved for Chatham. There are 11 members of the board. We asked if they had ever come down and seen Chatham. And she didn't know. And so I got a real problem with her now saying they could start taking the temperature. We've been talking about taking the temperature since 2017. So I don't believe, if if you're holding out for Mast DOT making exceptions on the bike lanes and the size of the sidewalks and mast arms, I would say it's not going to happen. The primary impetus for this project was the perceived danger of this intersection. And I did send you this morning the accident crash data update from the Chatham Police Department from 2009 to the present. The most recent engineering traffic counts that HSH has provided with us were from 2014. At that point, in that intersection, there were 10,540 car vehicles that passed through that intersection in a 24-hour period, and it was not peak season. Used only 5,000 vehicles per day as an average instead of the 10,000. That means that 1.825 million vehicles pass through that intersection on an annual basis. And over the, since 2009, 21.9 million cars have passed through that intersection. In those 12 years, there have been only 38 accidents, zero deaths, zero major injuries, five minor injuries, six bicycles, zero pedestrians, zero speeding tickets, one red light violation, and six arrestor citations. 38 accidents with no major injuries out of 21.9 million vehicles in 12 years. The odds of any one of us being in one of those accidents is 1 in 576,000. And the odds of being struck by lightning in your lifetime is 1 in 15,000. This is not a high-risk area. The people of Chatham have gotten used to it.
Oh, I think Elaine has been muted. I'm sorry, Elaine. I don't know.
Sorry. How far we're?
Maybe you could, yeah, I think it just happened. So maybe you can wrap it up, because we still have other speakers as well.
I'd like so, but it's been two and a half hours. And this is also really important for all the people in Chatham. And I have spent an awful lot of time on this. We've seen the Mast.
Well, let's proceed then, please. Let's go. Okay.
We've seen the Mast. We have seen the Mast DOT lighting the wide asphalt multipurpose sidewalks, the dangers of granite curbing, particularly dangerous for cyclists, and all the mandatory Mast DOT signs in West Chatham. So far, there are 37 at the George Ryder Roundabout alone. And that's what this intersection is going to look like. I think we're being held hostage by Mast DOT. They're saying, if we don't make a decision, if we don't spend more money and move forward, they're going to knock us off. I think that the concerns for the Fire Department can be taken care of without going through this massive project. Instead of, I can't, I, besides Mast DOT, I don't know who in 2021 is saying, let's dig this up, widen these roads, cut down trees, and replace green space by almost doubling the amount of asphalt from 3,500 to 6,000 square feet in an ecologically fragile, historic coastal community. I don't think anyone would say that. Instead, it's time and focus on repairing and maintaining what we have. It's time to pull the project. Mast DOT should simply replace the rusting lights, put in those things that the Fire Department needs and crosswalks, fix the crumbling sidewalks, paint the side, the crosswalks, and that's it. It's their job. And while they're at it, they should repair the downtown Rotary. It's a mess, and it has been for years, and that's their job, too. I think spending Chapter 90 funds on this is wrong. That should be dedicated to other projects in town. And I frankly, I'm sorry, it's clear that HSH works for Mast DOT and not us. It's time we stop projects to accommodate tourists, because that's what this is about. And instead, make decisions that preserve the historic integrity, beauty, and natural environment that draws people to Chatham. Visitors need to accommodate what we're trying to preserve and what this is unique to the, our town and what it stands for. That's why they come here in the first place. We are Chatham's caretakers for future generations, and we have to start acting like it. And I hope that you will, you know, we can spend more money. And Ms. Pike is going to come back and she's going to tell you exactly what she told you in September 2019, that Mast DOT will not approve the exemptions. It is their way or the highway. So I hope we just cut the cord now so we can get on and fix the intersection and be done with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Our next speaker is Mark Keller. Welcome, Mark.
Hi, Madam Chairman. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'll be brief. I live at 812 Main Street. I'm two doors down from Ground Zero, if you will. And a couple of months ago, when the flags were planted with the little pink ribbons, I was really taken back. I'm not in favor of the design currently proposed. We're losing half our front lawn. A lot of people will look at it and say, well, two or three people losing some land, it's no big deal. I ask that you just put yourself in our shoes and look at it from our perspective. We already deal with a lot of traffic noise where we are. Sometimes I have to chuckle respectfully when I hear people complain about the noise at the airport. We have a lot of noise all year round at all hours of the day. We knew that when we bought our home. But looking forward and looking at the other traffic projects down the road and west of us, we are not looking forward to more traffic with the turning lane and bike lanes, et cetera, in front of our house. And then having all that noise that much closer by losing our front lawn. I understand the the intersection needs some updating, but I ask that you keep that in mind when you move forward and make your decisions. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, are there any other public comments? Anybody that hasn't spoken yet?
Susanna Nickerson.
Okay. Yes, hi, Susanna. Yes, Susanna, go ahead.
My name is Susanna Nickerson. I live at, on Main Street. And I'm having trouble imagining why we would be looking for an expansion of the Crow Road intersection. I go through there often, and it seems like a breeze. It's so easy. And I have only gotten stuck in traffic there twice in my lifetime. Everything flows really well through there. I did speak with Tom Temple today, and he mentioned the widening for wheelchair accessibility, which seems it could be done without the other changes. It could be safe and and also wheelchair accessible without such a large vehicle. Especially losing green space. I think we all know that we're in a crisis now with green space and with climate change. And I just, I don't, I I would like to see the town in general just really think that every time we give up part of our green space, we are, in a sense, condemning ourselves. We really need to take this to heart and start planting trees rather than tearing them out. And looking out for our green space with honor to the earth. And thank you. Thank you. I hope this project will not happen as it has been presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Susanna. Okay, our next speaker is Rick Levitt. Rick?
Thank you, Shereen. This has been a good discussion tonight. I think the direction of it is very good. This project is should should be handled by the town, not by the state. We have a much better sense of what the entrance to our historic downtown can and should be. We also have a sense of what the safety needs are, but they are just one need. There are many other needs for this community. And preserving the entrance to our historic downtown. And preserving the entrance to our historic downtown, I place in a very high priority. You have, if Mast Dot is unable to grant the exemptions, and they probably will not, because we've had that experience here in West Chatham. On the West Chatham roadway, we wanted a number of exemptions, including the extraordinary lighting that they have put in here, and they have denied it. You have another option. You can take control of Route 28 just the same way that Barnstable Village on Route 6A took control of a state highway running through its historic village center. And I recommend that you do that if Mast Dot is unable to give us the exemptions that are needed to make this roadway an appropriate entrance to our historic downtown. I think the section between the Crow Road intersection and the downtown Rotary Roundabout, whatever you want to call it, should be owned and maintained and designed by this town and not by state officials who have no interest or even knowledge of our town. I've made this recommendation several times to the town staff. I know it's, I know it's an exceptional recommendation, but it is, it will be the only way, Chatham, you as this board and all of us can control the way the entrance to our downtown, our historic downtown looks. Thank you so much, Shereen.
Thank you, Rick. The next speaker is Paul. Would you please let us know your last name? Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Chair. My name's Paul Aldridge. I live on Snow Lane. I'd like to echo what a couple of the previous people said, which is basically, I think the town would be best served by handling this project themselves. I'd also like to suggest that maybe both the chiefs provide some data. They may have already done that. I'm kind of new to this topic. But just an indication of how frequently their crews respond and go through that intersection. I know from the amount of sirens I hear that it's a lot. And obviously, we want them to be safe because of the work they're doing. So I'd like to agree with the previous several speakers that I think we should just handle this ourselves.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Paul. All right, if there's no other comments, I'm going to bring it back to the board. And for some final thoughts, I see Dean's hand is up. But first, Dean, Carol G., I'm assuming is Carol Gordon. Carol, would you like to speak first? Go ahead, Carol.
Thank you. Thank you, madam. I do just like to say that I'm urging you also to vote to put the state aid Chapter 90 funding allocation for the proposed Crow Road project on the back burner. And I see no reason to widen the intersection or the streets or double the lanes and things like this. And most of all, to diminish the view of the Unitarian Church. So hoping that you will vote no on the use of these funds and that we'll be able to make the improvements the way Chatham wants to do it instead of the state. So let's save what we have left of Chatham and. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Okay. Dean?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of points. And then I think I'm going to offer a motion, although I will say I would consider delaying offering that motion if the Select Board wish, were to wish to adopt Select Board Member Matters idea for a public session within the next week or two, although I strongly believe I know what the sentiment from the public is going to be, at least in the majority. This is a legacy project. It was initiated back in 2013 before I came on the board, before any any member of this board, except I think the Select Board Member Dykens was on the board, just as West Chatham was a legacy project. And I supported West Chatham after I got on the board. I voted against it, as people know, when I was on the Finance Committee. And I voted against it at town meeting. But I support it. I was not willing to overturn the direction of the previous Board of Selectment, and I think it's a good project. I continue to support it with whatever imperfections there are. And I think some of those will, in terms of actual implementation, be smoothed over. But I just wanted to ask this rhetorical question. If we were dealing cavala rasa with nothing having been filed previously, would we be considering taking this approach now? Or would we rather be following Mr. Levitt's suggestion, which is to have the town take over the ownership of this segment of Route 28? And we can do whatever we want with that. As long as we're not in violation of federal or state law. We'd have to pay for it, but we pay for a lot of things. And as I said at a previous board meeting, this town is not broke.
Okay. Well, Tom?
So there we are.
Dean, Tom has his hand up if you want him to answer that question, or maybe you can add some more feedback.
Sure.
I believe, I believe my predecessor had already come up with numbers with the Board of Selectment of the manpower that would be needed to take care of Route 28, not only during the course of the year, but I'm talking even during snow and ice operation. We don't currently have the manpower to keep up with what we have. And I can't, I can't imagine what it would be to take Route 28 from Main Street, from the rotaries there, all the way to, you know, Missourby's and beyond. That's what they, that's what they want us to take over, and they wouldn't just piecemeal it out. They want you to take over the whole, and that includes drainage and everything with it. And there's a, there's a lot of unknowns that go with that.
I confess I don't have the facts as to what happened in Barnstable, but I don't think that the town of Barnstable controls all of Route 28. Maybe they do. Maybe you can correct me on that. I'm talking about the small stretch of Route 28 that we really call Main Street at this intersection. That's what I'm talking about. But again, I just asked the question rhetorically to fellow board members and the public. Would we be filing a project initiation form on this right now? I don't think so.
Tom, you started to say that you didn't, you weren't aware whether you could piecemeal out Route 28 in the town of Chatham to be taken over. Is that, is that what you were trying, you were trying to say?
Yeah, I think what, you know, what they normally like to do, I mean, in possible, they may have said that we want to take over from here to here, and you would take over everything. That's all infrastructure. That's all the pipes under the ground. If your drainage is failing, you, you know, there's no money appropriated for fixing whatever's broken. I mean, if you're looking to take over a section, you know, I would recommend that, you know, we do the investigation and film the drain lines and film the lines that are there. Take a look at the conditions and what it's going to cost to actually do the necessary repairs and cost. Because, you know, it's all a factor of that and plus maintaining it. Because currently, they maintain all that and go right through the roundabout and right, continuing on their way through, while we cover all the other roads. So, you know, it's something we could put out there and send a letter and request. But I've dealt with them in the past in other other communities, and they want you taking all of it because they don't want it when they do turn it over. So I'd be very surprised, but I certainly have no problem investigating if that's what you're looking for.
Well, we could always file special legislation to try to get it done now. Well, I'm going to put the motion on the table. If it's seconded, fine, we'll have to have a vote. If it's not, if there's sentiment about wanting to do a public session within the near future, I'm happy, happy to withdraw the motion. So I, I move that the Select Board terminate this Crow Road project and request removal from the table.
Second.
Wait a sec. Did I hear a second from Cory?
Cory, I seconded.
Okay.
I'd like to have a comment, if possible.
Yeah, go ahead, Cory.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this has been a very, very good discussion tonight. A lot of input, a lot of, you know, emails coming in before, a lot of material being thrown out there, whatever. I've got to say, the only thing that was a hurdle for me is the, you know, the fire and rescue component. And let me say, we have a top notch fire and rescue crew. They've navigated that intersection for decades. You know, they have the capability. I don't think it's been, you know, it's that big of an obstacle. It would be a preference to fix it. I would hope the town would, you know, independently move forward to take some actions to address that for a fire and safety aspect, making some corrections on our own with our, under our own budgets. But the motion on the table, I'm going to support.
Okay. All right, we have a second. Just for, just to let you know, we have CEO Tom Stokes from HSH that would like to say something at this time. Mr. Stokes?
Yes, thank you very, very much, Chair. Yeah, just to add, after, you know, 30, 35 years of experience working on Mast Dot intersection projects, there has been a lot of work put in here over the years, certainly. And there's certainly a lot of different perspectives when you approach a project that's so important, especially gateway into the town and the parameters associated with that. And what feels like big change, sometimes what I find now is Mast Dot are much more focused on a human scale projects that I think they will, they'll honor here. And the whole 11 foot lane and things like that, that's all something new. It used to be 12 and 13 foot lanes. So they have responded and addressed some of the concerns a lot of people have. But as I say, it's different perspectives. But a project like this through the years has been like a $1 million project. This is now a $2.9 million construction project. When, when talk about piecemealing out some pieces of it, the parts you like, some of them just all go hand in hand, and it's very difficult to do that. But when you think about the Chapter 90 money that you're talking about, that the town gets 300,000 and the 70,000 we're talking here, it's to open the door to a $3 million construction project. And ultimately, when you look at the plan and you look at that as being 3 million, and you look at what you can do on the side streets of the streets that you do own, you can see that that's a significant amount of money. Now, the funding that may be with the town and taking that control away from Mast Dot, or those are the things, are certain things other communities have done in the past. But I think Mast Dot want, would want to work with the town and at least hear it out in terms of what's needed to get it to an approved 25%. And if that isn't, if that isn't palatable to the town, I think that you can certainly stop right then and there. But, but as far as I can see, in terms of the waivers, you're really just talking about the shared juice path or the bike path at that corner. There isn't very much else going on. We've narrowed the travel lanes to 11 foot already. We've had, we have a lot of the guidelines addressed. So it's a fully safe project with the way it's presented right now. The only thing that would be up in the air was whether we could add or take that away. And that's, that would be just one exemption. So from my point of view, I think Director, Director Temple mentioned earlier, a project like this fits in well, although it's 2026. It could happen in two or three years' time. I've seen it happen often with intersection projects. The projects you're competing against, make no mistake about it, as you well know, this is a very competitive environment in order to get projects funded, fully constructed, with no town costs associated with it, only the design. That that, that they can, they can certainly move forward and get accelerated up in the line. I know we're just finishing the other project. And, you know, within a year or two, you may be ready for something like this. But this should be a one construction season project, and it shouldn't be as, you know, as disruptive as the other projects. But having said that, it is perspective. I understand that. And I just wanted to say that we do everything in our power to help you out. But, but it needs, it's a full partnership. Mast Dot owns the Main Street, and you own the side streets, and we're working for the town and trying to do as best we could. But the only way you'll get this response on what you're going to do is really a 25%. And then, then you know what you got. Then it's a public hearing, and it's a done deal in terms of preliminary, and we just finalize the details. But you've set all the parameters at that point.
Thank you very much. So we had public forums on this, this issue leading up to September 19th. We had public input. I don't know what else would be new to gain from one now. I can see us having extensive conversations if we go to 25% design, you know, once we have something in hand to see whether we move forward or not. So I'm not sure whether the forum would be in appropriate timing into all of this, Dean, from my own personal opinion right now. Jeff, you're, you're next, and then Peter.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not going to vote in favor of Dean's, Dean's motion. I lost you guys for some reason. Couple of reasons. I, I think this is a, I think this is a safety issue. And we heard our, we heard our fire chief talk directly to the, to the issues of safety, number one. Number two, there are issues with the crosswalk there all the time. I see folks struggling across the crosswalk, especially from the Chatham Village Market over to Crow Road and back and forth. Number three, you know, folks say there haven't been a lot of accidents and there's not a safety issue. I'll just remind folks that, you know, a parishioner at the Unitarian Church was struck and killed going down, trying to cross Old Queen Anne Road some time ago. Now, was it a car darting through that intersection? Was there not enough light, blah, blah, blah? I don't know. But someone lost their life there on Old Queen Anne, Queen Anne Road. So I just want folks to remember that. I'm, I'm not going to vote in favor of Selectman Castro's article, or motion, I should say. However, I am concerned that, that we not have a behemoth project that is, that, you know, overwhelms the entrance to our town. I'm very attuned to that. So I'm pleased to hear that at the 25% phase, we'll have a public, public forum, a public hearing, a public forum, I should say. And we'll get input from the public then, and we can decide whether or not to go forward or not. I just think to fall off the tip now before we get to that phase is not, is not as smart, is not a smart decision. So that's where I'm headed. Thanks.
Okay, Jeff, I agree with you. All right, Peter, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I sort of echo what Jeff said? The, the comments we've heard is that we'll take care of this road by ourselves somehow, but we fail to listen carefully to the fact that D O T owns the main road. If we're going to have to deal with the intersection there at all, we're going to have to deal with them. I'd rather go through the process of getting to a, getting to a 25% design review and to, 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 to say that just because they didn't do it before, they're going to do it now. Yeah, I get it. They, they, they potentially can hold us hostage. But by God, you know, they ought to, if anyone can help us, it's HSH in a way to let us, let them know. And I'm, I'm not adverse to letting them know. They made some, some, some comments to us when we met with the D O T on West Chatham about how they understand that we have a neighborhood center. But to me, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a data guy. We, we need a design before you can make a decision. And I don't, I could see why Mast Dot will not give it to us now. You have to have a formal design before they'll do it. And then if they play games with us, what are we giving up? Six months, and yes, we paid $70,000 for it, but at least we have the data to go ahead. And Mr. Levitt's point about Barnstable, I mean, I, when I was on a planning board, I met with one of their people over there who was very instrumental. And it's a short period, short length from of road. I don't remember exactly what it is. And because it went right through their historic district, and they took it over. And it's, if you look at it now, it looks like a historic district. They did a wonderful job. And if we're going to take something and try to do something, we have to own it. So we don't know how much that's going to cost us. We don't know whether or not Mast Dot will move ahead, but by God, we ought to be looking at it. So I'm, I'm going to vote against it, although when I first came in here, I was, I was, I was prone to, to vote with him. And I understand where the Finance Committee may be coming from. But after I heard what the chief said, and both chiefs, I'm concerned about that intersection. I'm concerned about ADA capability. I mean, you just don't ignore those things. And who's held responsible? You know, we're the guys that are going to have to vote for it. If it goes away, we're still held responsible for what happens there. I mean, you know, and I'm getting a little bit emotional, but it bothers me that we say we're going to do this on our own when we can't.
What do you mean, you can't?
Okay, I think that we are prepared to take a vote now, and we can move forward. All right. Cory?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Jeff? You're muted, Jeff.
No.
Dean?
Hi.
Peter?
Nay.
And the chair says nay. Okay. So we're going to move forward with the 25% design. And we will have a public forum when that design comes forward. Be looking for some modifications and exemptions and a scaled down project. If it doesn't happen from, in that respect, and we're not satisfied and the public isn't, we have an opportunity to say no at that time. But at least we, we vetted it through. I feel better about that because of the ADA and the pedestrian issues and the issues of the fire chiefs and the chief. I feel better about that because of the ADA and the pedestrian issues and the issues of the fire chiefs and the chief police.
Madam Chair, do you need a motion, Madam Chair?
A motion to, yes, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
No, a, a motion to, to move forward.
Oh, right. A motion to move forward. Yep, go ahead.
I'd like to move that we continue to fund the FF fiscal year 2026 tip project and encumber 237K from Chapter 90 funding to supplement the available funding of 71K for the project through PSNA Phase 4 to meet readiness milestones remaining on the tip. I would also add that at the 25% completion, we have a public, a hearing, a public forum, I should say, for, for input and a review of the design. That's part of the, that's part of the motion.
Part of the motion. We got it. Peter, a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. If there's no further discussion from the board, we'll take a vote. Dean?
No.
Jeff?
Aye.
Cory?
No.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your input tonight, and a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
We're moved.
Okay, I want to thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
No.
Yes.
Very funny, Cory. The chair says aye. First off, I want to thank all the public participants tonight, the team from HSH, DPW team, Jill, and everybody else that was on the call tonight that provided support for our meeting. Have a good night. Hopefully, it won't be too much, too much more rain tomorrow, but we do need, we do need the rain, so.
There we go.
Everybody, have a good evening. It is now 9:09. Take care.